We have with us tonight Troop 72-595 from the Girl Scouts, so I wonder if I could ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I was going to ask what happened, but I didn't have all night.
All right, the first item on our agenda are is open public comments. Is there anybody in the audience with comments this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item number two, the acceptance of minutes. Jason, what minutes do we have? Do we have March 31?
We don't have March 31 in the folder, but I think those are all set to go. You want to move those?
Do we have, we don't have them in the packet though.
I don't have a, I don't have a paper copy. Are they in the packet?
No, they're not in the packet. The only one we have in the packet is May 6, and then a corrected version came in today.
Okay. So I guess that's going to be May 6 only then, Bill.
All right. Does anybody have any comments about the meeting minutes of May 6, 2015? Yeah, all right, if not, then I'll move to accept the minutes of May 6, 2015. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any further comment? All in favor? Okay, those minutes are passed, and we'll defer the minutes of March 31 and 11. We have correspondence items A through P, and I'll make a motion to accept correspondence items A through P as listed in the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes. And our, on our consent agenda tonight is a single item, a special permit for the Maynard Community Band to play in Memorial Park. And I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for May 19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor? Motion passes. All right. So we have, at 7:15 tonight, we have a legal hearing for a telephone polls, electric polls, but before then, we have a presentation from the Girl Scout troops about a GOGA ball pit. So somebody here wants to step up and introduce yourself and your ideas.
(inaudible)
Cameras are everywhere.
(inaudible)
My name is Lily Wilson. Um, my troop number is 72595. We are leading a community service project for our Silver Award. To reach our goal, we are trying to build a GOGA pit in Maynard on either the Fowler Playground or at one of the town parks. We have researched GOGA pits in the local area, and there have been no reports on any safety issues. So I'm Chloe Donovan, I am part of Troop 72595. And this is the history of GOGA ball. GOGA ball was created in Israel in the late 1960s, is also known as Octoball or Israel Dodgeball. In the early 1970s, it was introduced as GOGA ball in the USA. Nowadays, it has become a popular game at many camps and school playgrounds in the U.S.
All right. Um, I'm Kayla, and for rules and regulations, GOGA ball is a game similar to dodgeball. The objective of GOGA ball is to have the ball hit other players below the knees so they get out and have to leave the GOGA pit. Players use their hands to move the ball, not their feet. The last player left in the pit wins.
Okay, well, I'm Caroline, and I'm doing the benefit. So over 90% of all children in the USA do not get a physical, enough physical activity every day. Having a GOGA pit in Maynard would increase the daily physical activity for Maynard children. Additionally, it encourages sportsmanship, honesty, decision-making, teamwork, and self-confidence. It includes children and adults of all ages and abilities.
Um, my name is Sydney Jacobson, and we would like the GOGA pit to be an octagon. We're, we're trying to make it three feet tall and 20 feet in diameter. The cost of this project would be roughly $1,000. Our goal is to fund and build the GOGA pit as part of our shovel Silver Award project.
(inaudible)
What we, what we did, the girls would like to do this as part of their Silver Award project, so we will take the responsibility of funding it and building it. Um, what we did is we did a research of area, towns, schools and towns that have type of GOGA pit, ball pit that we would like to build and like to see used in Maynard. So we have a reference of about six names and surrounding schools, one of which is the Douglas School, the Carroll School, um, in Lincoln, the Framingham YMCA, and this three or four other ones. We also have all that information in that binder. Um, the girls have done extensive research. They've also used a GOGA ball pit in nature's classroom, which is part of the seventh grade field, um, can you call it a field trip? Or nature's classroom is what they do for a week. And some of the girls have used it as part of Girl Scouts. Well, welcome to, if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them, we'll try to answer them.
Point out some stuff about the vote.
This one was in, was a GOGA pit in Framingham at, in the Y, the Framingham YMCA. Um, it was like they used dirt for theirs, but we could use like, we could use fake grass. Some people use normal grass or just plain old dirt. But it's not suggested to use gravel. A kid like falls.
Oh, talk about that.
So we did a survey, and we asked like, like students in Fowler if they would want a GOGA pit, and over 90% of all of them agreed to it.
Girls wrote up the survey themselves and distributed it to all, all of the students at Fowler through the phys ed classes. Um, and then conducted, you know, went through all the data and calculated it all.
Most of the kids who didn't, who said they didn't want a GOGA pit is because most of them, they just didn't know what it was, even after our written explanation.
Yeah, it really wasn't any real negative feature.
Yeah, and these are just like a list of all the, and rules of like GOGA ball. Do you read them? You have any questions?
I do. Um, so in town, which location in town do you think would get the most use? Would be the most convenient for people to get to and?
Anyone can?
I, I think probably the Coolidge Park, because it's more used by kids than the Rio Road Park.
What about the Fowler? Is Fowler better than Coolidge?
Kids will probably still be able to use it, because you can go after school to use it, and it would be nice to have some equipment at Fowler for kids to play on recess instead of just going like on the fields or in like the parking lot, like wobble like that. So I feel like it would be, use a lot of Fowler too.
They like both of those ideas, either Fowler or Coolidge.
But maybe not Rio.
Yeah, not as, not as much.
Gotcha. Chris, any question?
What, I don't know if you guys know the answer. What, what kind of upkeep are you looking at? And then, I mean, do, you know, who do we, once it's built, does, if it's built at Fowler, does Fowler take care of it?
That would be the general idea.
Okay.
Right. There is, there is, once you build it, it's just, you're building a ring, a wooden ring.
Yeah, no.
And then if we choose not to put any artificial turf, or if we just use regular grass, or, um, we could ask other Girl Scout troops if they could continue on the tradition, but it'd be up to the Girl Scout troops to do it. We would just have the responsibility of building it.
Gotcha. Tim, you have any questions?
No questions.
David?
Can you tell me briefly the significance of the Silver Award?
That's a great question.
Uh, the, so in Girl Scouts, there are three awards, bronze, which we have already got, the silver and the gold. And bronze, you work together as a whole troop. Silver is a little bit more independent, like more working as like just a troop without the leaders. And gold award is one you do by yourself, so the silver award is the second most important one, which is why we're doing such a big prom project for it.
And they're all community service.
And so we thought this would be good for the community, like somewhere for kids to play.
Very good. Congratulations on this great idea, and I think it's going to work for you, just determining where the best spot is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
Uh, I guess my question is mostly, you just mentioned, well, thank you very much for your presentation, first of all, for real. Uh, I guess, what's the, it's more of an opinion question, what's the best surface to play on? Sand or grass?
Um, I guess it kind of depends on the people, because some people say that they like dirt the best, and others say that they like fake grass, because it's easier to like take care of. So I guess it just kind of depends where you live and like the, you know, people who are running it. So it can be like, so you could choose whatever surface you would want to.
I feel like grass would be the best, because if someone falls, then they wouldn't hurt themselves as much as they would if it was like dirt or sand, so that's not good.
And you wouldn't be like, dirt or sand. If it were grass, then like, even if you fell or like left tracks on your shoes or something like that, like it wouldn't happen with the grass.
Jap them on the grass, right?
Uh, that's why some, that's why some schools, they like fake grass more, because it has the same type of quality as grass, but you don't have to mow it or like take care of the grass as much.
In, uh, in surveying the six area schools that I could come up with, and I talked to each one of them individually, if A, if they liked it, B, if the kids are using it. To us, that's the most important factor. We're going to do something, we want the other kid. Um, this troop is going to be too old for Fowler, so they're building something that's going to have the other children, all 400 of them, are going to enjoy even more. So one of the questions I had for all the other schools is, are the children using it? Once you put it up, three or four years from now, are they still using it? And the answer overwhelmingly is yes, and, um, but the other question I asked is about surfaces. There was only one, one of the GOGA pits that switched to an artificial turf. Everybody else had used dirt. Whether it's personal preference, I don't know, which is, those are the questions we asked.
One other question, if I may.
Um, have you made, excuse me, have you made the same presentation to the school committee? And, or do you plan to?
We, yeah, we did to Mr. Mila.
We didn't do the school committee.
No, we presented to Mr. Mila.
Mr. Mila, that's what he requested.
Okay.
And he said he was then the next thing, he was going to speak with Dr. Gerardi, so that's as far as we went so far in the.
Okay.
And, um, if we could find the right place for this, when would it happen?
Summer? Well, once we got all the materials.
We were going to start working on it in the summer, but we're also probably going to be working on it a lot next year.
We have a deadline. The girls can only, they have to be a certain age to finish the Silver Award, so we only have until next spring. So we were hoping to fundraise through the summer and into the fall and build it next spring. That's our long-term goal.
Right. Obviously, if we did great with the fundraising and we could build it in the fall, we would love to do that, but, you know.
It's going to depend.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. Kevin, anything, thoughts from staff?
Uh, just some of the conversations with regards to maintenance, obviously would be our concern at the Coolidge School, understanding what the implications of an added feature would be to the maintenance. It seems more than reasonable. Um, the other thing is, as you consider looking at the location for Fowler School, um, they have been approved money for, actually last evening at town meeting for playground design and moving forward with that, and if that's the direction you look to go towards, you want to start on the early conversations, so something like this can be included in that design layout for consideration, so that it's not, it's not thought of as an afterthought. You know, that there could be space either allocated or dedicated for that if you, if you chose to go to Fowler. Um, the Coolidge area already has a Girl Scout project with the Butterfly Garden, and so is another troop, if you will.
That's great.
They've done a great job there with getting that up and going and maintaining that, so, um, you know, it just, as I said, it would just be kind of, really, my concern is just the location and upkeep, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's talk around for the telephone poll hearing if you want.
(laughing)
Okay. Time being 7:15, we have a hearing tonight from EverSource Energy in Verizon to obtain a grant location to install new poles, and I'll begin by reading the legal notice. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 1, 66. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 19, 2015, at 7:15 PM in the Michael J. Giannottis Meeting Room at the Maynard Town Building. A petition and plan is being presented by the N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy in Verizon, for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install four new poles, 362A, 363, 364, and 365 Fowler Street, Maynard. Copy is filed with the Town Clerk and the Board of Selectmen. All right, so this meeting is brought to order, and Kevin, who do we have presenting?
Christine Crosby with EverSource Energy.
All right.
And we are requesting a grant of location for the four poles out of Fowler Street.
Okay.
Poles 936 over 2A, 3, 4, and 5. Uh, one of the poles, Pole 3, is actually a relocation, it's an existing pole that's being moved. And the purpose of the poles would be to bring the overhead lines down the street in order to feed four new house lots that are being built down there.
Okay.
Electric service, telephone service.
All right. Let's see here. Kevin, is there any comments from staff on this? Police, fire, DPW?
Uh, no, there's no, no issues that have been raised.
All right. Actually, I have a map here I should give to the board members if you want to see that. Any questions from the, the board about the installation of the poles?
Yeah, Bill, I do. Was there ever any thought of underground power here? If not, why? And if yes, I'm, I'm wondering, it's, maybe it's a planning board issue or whatever, but I'm just wondering if for the future of the community, if it's better for us to plan on underground wires rather than above-ground poles that can oftentimes fall down, get hit, cause problems, whatever.
I, I believe the Planning Board approved plans showed that they can, they can go with the poles, and that, but the services, direct services to the houses are going to be underground.
Okay. From EverSource's viewpoint, um, I mean, you're basically just going with the Planning Board recommendation that, you know, they need power, and that's how you're going to do it?
Yes.
All right.
Was that actually the recommendation from the Planning Board, or was that just, there's never any discussion?
I, I didn't have the access to the Planning Board approved plans.
The theme of that whole subdivision was to keep everything as it was in the original part of the street. And it was probably more that it was a request of the abudders to have everything look exactly the same as you come up the street, which included poles, the width of the road, the, everything we could do to make it look uniform. So your abudders kind of requested that from the Selectmen, I mean, from the Planning Board.
Okay.
Planning Board was amenable.
That's a good segue, because this being a public hearing, I was going to request any comments from the audience. So, anybody here? Oop, we got a couple. Yeah, your name and?
Alexandra Howard, 9 Fowler Street.
Okay.
Um, well, the way I remember it, we'd be happy to have it underground, but I think it was, the developers thought that would be too expensive. Um, and I'm here because right now, one, there's one pole that's kind of on my property, and then one that's well into Mrs. Lentz, which is 197. And right now, the way it looks like they're going to be two, like sort of right on the edge of my property, 111, to me the case, that's why the whole pole can't stay where it is.
Do you have a copy of the map you can point to for us?
Um, so my property is that little triangle that's 197A.
Can you come up here and just point to a hard copy? We don't, we're kind of sharing here.
(inaudible).
Want to sit down?
(inaudible). I'm going to go in.
(inaudible).
Mrs. (inaudible).
Where would the double mix?
So right now, it's, there's one here, and there's one down here, and now there's going to be one here, one here.
I'm not sure what property is whose.
I got it. All right. I can't read that point. So, um, do you understand her, her comment and?
I don't. I got you. Yes, please, that would be great.
So this is me?
Okay.
Right now, there's one here, and there's one, is this the old one? Because this is the existing one, it's right here, I believe.
This is existing, and this is existing.
Yeah, and then there's one here.
And this is, this one is the existing pole.
Yeah, and so it's going to be moved from here to here.
To the, yes, actually.
I'm just wondering why I can't stay as it is.
Um, I believe there may have been a wire crossing issue out there, and that's why they had to move the pole back.
Okay.
I, I can, I could check into that, I could check into that, but I.
Because you can see they're, they're both like now, pretty much.
Right, but I, it was, it was a wire, there were a lot of wire crossings out there, and they would try to eliminate because of the whys that were coming all the way down the road here.
Okay, I don't know what that means.
Okay, I can find out for sure. I mean, I can get that information back to you.
If I can follow up, Bill?
Yeah.
I'm interested in the comment from the abudder, and how it sort of counters what the developer said. You indicated that the abudders wanted it to look consistent. I'm hearing from this one abudder that that's, that's not the case.
There were a lot of abudders there that were, there were other abudders there that seemed to be in favor of poles.
And her recollection is otherwise, and also that it was expense was the issue for you rather than the abudders?
Well, I'm sure the Planning Board would not, you know, the Planning Board is, is the ultimate say, and they, they address all the concerns of the abudders, and that's how it evolved. I am sure that's, that's how it did come down.
Kevin, we don't have any documentation from the Planning Board, do we?
I don't have any.
All right. Um, any other odd questions from the audience? Vic?
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, that the Planning Board has been following the rule that the utilities would be buried in subdivisions. Now, perhaps the size of the subdivision and their infinite wisdom doesn't require the utilities to be buried, but if I'm not mistaken, and I've attended numerous Planning Board meetings over the years, one of their rules has been, over the number of years, to put the utilities underground for a number of reasons, one, one of them being the aesthetics, of course. And, you know, it just makes the neighborhood look a lot better, but maybe, maybe they've waived the provision for subdivision that doesn't really, it's not that big, okay?
Okay.
But I, I don't understand why all of a sudden they, they don't do consistently what they've done over the years. Thank you.
All right. Eric?
One of the contractors, they decided that because the road's so narrow, to put it underground, you have to go to all the abudders, go through all their land to do it. The road is watered, sleet on the road, I think there's some gas, I'm not, there is gas on the road. So there's no room, the road's only 18 feet wide, and that's how everybody wanted to keep it the same, because we were going to widen the whole road, because you're supposed to, you're supposed to put a 40-foot road in there, and you can't do it, because there's enough land to do that. So the planning board decided to do the thing, and all the abudders wanted to go along with it.
Is there?
There's no place to put underground. That's why the planning.
Are you saying there's only an 18-foot right of way, or are you saying there's an 18-foot road on a 40-foot righty?
And all the abudders, you go down there, there's no, there's no room. Maybe it's a 20-foot right of way, I don't know, but it's only 18, 15-foot pavement, one spot 17-foot pavement, and their sidewalk and their houses right there. And to do that, you have to dig up everybody's land to do it.
To go back to the existing pole.
With all the water, and the sewer, and the gas there. That's why the planning board, the best thing would be the poles there.
Okay, gotcha.
(inaudible).
Any other?
If you track the minutes, I don't think you see anybody saying against poles, so everybody would follow poles.
Yes.
In the minutes of nothing, no one had denied the poles situation at all.
Gotcha.
I think there's not a comment.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, to create a whole controversy about the underground or not, you know, I think we were okay either way. Um, I was just wondering, you know, why there was going to be two on my land, really.
Mm-hmm. And it appears that we can't get the answer to that question just yet. And frankly, I wouldn't mind getting at least a written information from the Planning Board, so my suggestion is that we continue this hearing through our next meeting on June 2. Do we have any other hearings that day?
One of the first.
It's not a scheduled hearing, though.
It's not, yeah.
No, I don't think there's any. We have a liquor license issue that we need to discuss, too.
Okay. I mean, I expect the hearing, you know, five, five or 10 minutes to finish it up. Um, yeah, so I'm going to suggest that, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this hearing to June 2, right?
June 2.
June 2 at 7:15 PM. We have a second? Second. Any discussion?
No, the only, so the only question for June 2 is why there's two poles on that lot?
Why there's two poles, and we're going to get some information from Planning Board just to confirm that stuff.
Can I just say one other thing? The, the poles are within the layout of the public way, but she was, I thought her question was why in that particular location.
Yes, I thought that.
Okay.
Those questions as well, yeah. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay, but we'll take care of this shortly. All right. Next up on our agenda is some reserve fund transfer notices. And I guess we all noted last night at town meeting that we had not yet requested any, so. Kevin rushed right in with a big stack of them.
Oh, that's not fair. We knew they were coming.
We did. We did. It was nice of them to delay this long. So Kevin, you want to talk briefly about what you're sending over to Finco?
Yes. Um, thank you. So, yeah, it wasn't a, it was, it was, it wasn't a strategy, I assure you. It was to, to, obviously to identify where the needs are as we get closer to closing on our fiscal year, some of which we've known have been coming. Um, if we go in sort of chronological order, what you should have in your packet, or at least in this scanned piece labeled as reserve fund transfers, starting out with?
In Dropbox, I don't think.
In Dropbox, yeah. Um, starting out with the request for various departments for, to cover FY 2015 salary increases. Uh, there's a, there's a back- There's a, there's a backup documentation that lists all of the departments, and then the, there's a column that will illustrate there the variance between the approved budget and the revised budget. All of those departments have increases, needs. You'll see some of those are dashed out with some fairly significant savings, particularly in the police department, that we're going to be able to cover within their operating budget of, of the police department. So we're not going to, even though that is a considerable amount of the increase, we're not, we're not going to need to have a finance committee reserve fund transfer to cover those, or the budget for salaries in, in the police department are in good shape. So those will get washed out, that's why we'll see that dashed out. So what we're looking for is the $44,006.15 to cover those, those costs in FY 15. If you recall, four collective bargaining agreements were finished and negotiated and took effect July 1, 2015, and those increases obviously were not budgeted for during negotiations, and that's what's reflected here. Again, it's, it's probably about $40,000 less than what the real impact is, but we're only seeking the 44,615. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay. The other item was the legal budget, the litigation expenses. What I've done this year was created a line item within the legal department that's specifically for litigation expenses. The finance committee is aware of it, as I proposed the FY 16 budget, that we should be funding some amount for litigation. We have not been, and we have continuously, year to year, been going to the FinCom Reserve to account for that. But it's pretty certain there's going to be some set amount of litigation expenses. As reflected here, the present balance is in the negative $19,000, with still some litigation invoices that are out there. So we're looking to seek the $30,000 to cover some of that unknown, and anything, anything that may come in, you know, below that would just close out at the end of the year as department turnbacks. Again, that litigation is expenses unforeseen regarding events that arise, or litigation due to lawsuits, contract disputes, the biggest one being some ongoing personnel issues that have been in litigation now for several years, and are unpredictable to most degree, and also outside of our scope of legal contract services. Questions? Just to cite, as I mentioned, the FY 16, we've created a new line item for litigation, and there's $10,000 put in there. Hopefully, we won't need to see that again, but again, it's unpredictable. Other item is to $16,000 is in the veterans' budget to cover veteran benefits for May and June. The original budget was $4,750 per month, and the actual was just over $6,000 per month due to the three additional veterans receiving benefits. Again, those are unpredictable as those benefits in veterans come forward and become eligible. It's, it's unforeseen. So that, we'll cover that through the remaining of the fiscal year.
I have a question on that. If I recall correctly, we get a partial reimbursement on chair sheet for that-
Yes.
-in a future year?
Yes. Correct. The other-
One other question?
Yes.
I just don't recall when we'd had our budget discussion on that particular item. Did we budget more for '16 as a result of these for '15?
No. Those, those items, that veterans, you remember that line item once? I think it was a level, it was a slight increase, but I don't know that it counted for the additional. I think we looked at the budget and speaking with the veterans' agent, he was anticipating somebody to come off for fiscal, for another, for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
What happens is that it's not an annual payment either.
Yeah.
People join up through this, like February, March, April. So you can't even look at the year-to-date number and extrapolate what it's going to be for the next six weeks. The recent payments are higher than the ones that's fall.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, this one, that's a common one, because it is such, it is really unpredictable-
Yeah, gotcha.
-and driven by, by the veteran individuals. The other item was the DPW, construction and maintenance for police detail shortfalls, to cover police details for some of the Chapter 90 projects that, that we undertook. The other item was also in the DPW for $10,000, which was to cover costs that were overrun for parking deck repairs. What happened with this item was, as we, as some of the work that was done on Nason Street with curving and the retaining wall and shrubbery, the prior, excuse me, prior facilities manager had posted this particular payment, this last $10,000 amount, to the construction and maintenance budget of the DPW, as opposed to the article, and it was found as we're going through the, the end-of-the-year fiscal items. So we're looking to just close that project out and make that whole. I don't have the total, it's somewhere around $140,000 or $45,000, $75,000, $91,000, $20,000. Yeah, it's about $131,000 or so.
That'd be pretty good if that's all we take out of the reserve fund in a year.
Yeah.
One comment, Mr. Chair, just for the edification of our new members who have not gone through this process before with, with reserve fund transfers and people watching at home or in the audience. This is not something that we actually vote on here this evening, it's just an acknowledgement from the board, and it's a fairly new process, because in the previous years, the board really didn't, I guess, actually, statutorily, were supposed to recognize it and pass it along to the FinCom, and we hadn't done that historically, and we started doing it within the last few years, and that's what this is, is just a recognition that something's being forwarded along to the finance committee and not actually our approval or disapproval of the requests.
All right. Any further comments for Kevin? Very good. All right. Next up on our agenda, item number eight is the municipal naming policy.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, let me see if I can find that in here. All right. Chief author of this is Krista Silva. Chris, you want to introduce the topic and your recommendations from the subcommittee?
The topic? The topic is Town of Maynard Municipal Naming Policy, which is a policy that the, we had a three-person subcommittee that developed this policy, and it's to guide the town in the process of renaming streets, parks, facilities, buildings, and other town property in the names of various people at the request of Maynard residents, past residents. And, do we need to read the whole thing?
No, we don't. We can just touch on the big points. I mean, what would it apply to, and how would the decision be made?
So, the, it applies to town land, facilities, parks, recreation facilities, buildings, streets, and the designation of commemorative street names and plaques that are compatible with the interests of the Town of Maynard and hence the values and heritage of the Town of Maynard. There are some criteria that are listed in the policy. There's a process in place, the process is a written request to the Board of Selectmen. There will be a, once we receive a written request, we will have a review, and we'll schedule an interview with the applicant. We will verify the information in the request, and then we'll vote to name a proven funding any naming rights and costs, and there'll be a public hearing on these as well. And the goal is to have these in to, by the end of the year, every year, by the 31st of December of a given year, and anything we receive in a given year will be voted on. We will approve it and we will vote on it at the town meeting of the following year. And all of this is, I believe it's posted on the website, or it will be posted on the website for anybody's review.
All right. Any comments from the board?
One question. Thank you to the subcommittee for working on this. It's been something that we've been talking about for about a year and a half, two years now. When we talk about a public hearing and posting in, published in the town newspaper, there's a cost associated with that. Is it the intent of the policy that the applicant be the person or the entity that furnishes the cost for the publishing of the notice, or is that borne by the town?
I would think that, that, it's, I mean, it's a minimal cost. We didn't, the town would bear that expense, I would think.
Yeah, I would concur with that. Any other questions from the board? Kevin, you have any questions?
I do not.
Yeah, all right. And just a reminder, this was actually included in the packet from the meeting on May 6.
It's also in tonight's packet, I think.
Is it?
Yeah.
Should be, yeah.
Last page, 40 of 40.
Oh, of tonight's packet, very good. Any questions from the, the audience regardless? All right. Let me just check this out here. So, anybody mind if I make a motion on this policy? All right. Make a motion at the Board of Selectmen question? No? Vic, go ahead.
I was looking over this application, and it says here to return by December 31st of current year, so the action can be taken at the next annual town meeting. This does not affect any of the names that are on the rooms, public buildings, anywhere in the town that have been done previously. This only applies to any new nominees, and then the board should deny any at all without stating any specific reasons.
Well, there's a couple of questions in there. One is, no, it doesn't apply to anything that's currently named. I also would point out that it does not apply to rooms, it only applies to buildings and grounds. It doesn't apply to interior facilities. And to your last question, I guess effectively that's true. I mean, the request is made, and then the board will consider whether to pursue the request, and then if the board decides to pursue the request, it will do the formal process.
My memory, Mr. Chairman, I can't remember the town meeting voting on any specific request or naming of any town property. You were sitting in a room that has been dedicated to a former town administrator who came aboard as a seat of work, okay? He was here for approximately 23 years, but I didn't see any of that go to town meeting or anywhere else. They recently named, at the new library, they recently named a room for one of the members of the library trustees or on the building committee. I didn't see any of that go before town meeting. So it would seem like you are drawing up a definite set of circumstances whereby future naming rights or naming will be by what you've got listed in this piece of paper here, or whatever you want to call it.
That would be correct.
Well-
Wouldn't that be correct? Just clarification, the reference to town meeting is, is only if there's extensive funding involved. It recognizes that the funding might have to come from a town meeting approval.
You're not saying that.
Approval of the naming is a board of selectmen decision, and if it doesn't require any funding, then that's the end of it. The approval of the naming is not a town meeting action, it's just recognition that, you know, some of these things could end up costing a fair bit of money, and, you know, town meeting is the authorization to spend money.
I don't remember any, any situation that I'm aware of, and I've been around for a couple of days now, that anybody requested any funding for any of these names.
And if that's true, then-
And if you can, if you can furnish me with some, I'd appreciate it, because, you know, they recently, within the last couple of three years, new era, okay, recently named a square over here across the street for a veteran that had been in war three years. But I, I don't remember anything of that nature going to town meeting, because we had eight squares that were named in honor of mostly, I believe, World War I veterans, okay? In fact, the local American Legion club is named after Frank Demas, who has a street off of Waldham Street with a bronze plaque, named after his in addition to the local Legion Post 235, which I happen to be a life member. But, I mean, I didn't see anybody, you know, have anything to do with, I mean, the board just voted, and that was it. So what you're doing now is, is you're setting a lot of conditions, so that supposedly, if you get a negative response from someone or something like that, that you can just simply, oh, no, we're not going to do it.
To the latter comment, that's correct. And to the former comments, probably nine times out of 10, the decision will just happen in this room, and that'll be the end of it, because it won't need funding. But, you know, if for some reason it does need funding, and I do recall going to town meeting for funding for those bronze plaques for the World War I veteran intersections, then it would go to town meeting, but only in those unique circumstances. Otherwise, it all happens here. But it happens here with fair notice to everybody in conversation, open conversation.
Okay, because as far as I, as far as I can tell, what you're doing is you're making the process complicated, which probably protects what you're sitting on.
Yep.
Well, Vic, in several years, you may not be here to tell us what to do, and we'll need a policy to guide us, and that's the purpose of writing the policy. And I'm not saying that to be a wise guy, I'm saying that because there is no policy. So if you, if someone else is going to sit in your seat and ask the questions that you ask, and you have the historical perspective, we won't have the answer. But going forward, we will have a policy to provide the answer, and that's the only reason for the policy. Not to make your life more difficult, or any applicant's life more difficult, it's to make the life of everybody else the same and consistent. So that's the only reason for the policy.
Mr. DeSilva, let me say this, you're not making my life any more difficult than it's been in the last 83 years. But I sometimes wonder why, when all of a sudden somebody makes a request, and then it goes through a process of we have to establish a policy. I can understand where you're coming from. It's a great thing, but, you know, foresight is 2020, and hindsight is something else. But for years, for years, they've had naming policies in this town, and nobody bought it to pay any attention to it until a certain thing was brought up, and you must be aware of it, because you made the statement.
I'm aware, I-
I agree with it. There should be a policy.
I will tell you right now, that I have been unaware of any naming policy of any type, and I know that I do not know what you're talking about. I've had no discussion with anybody there or here about any past naming policy. I was asked to sit and develop a naming policy for the Town of Maynard based on some from others, from other places, and we took pieces from other places, and we built a policy. I have no idea of any past requests for anything in the Town of Maynard. I have no idea of any past requests for anything in the town of Maynard. So that's not where I came from. I just came because I was asked to do something. It was to create a policy, which no one could find a prior naming policy for me to go by. So this is all brand new from other places and little bits and pieces taken together. So to be honest, I don't know what you're talking about, what you're referring to. If you want to get into it later, we can do that. But I'm just saying, this is just to make things consistent and level the playing field for everybody. So.
All right. I don't think anything new is coming from this conversation.
We're going to go with policy, okay?
Vic, do you have anything new to add in your comments? We understand your comments. Do you have anything new to add for a comment? Because I don't want to just continue the same comment.
I'm not going to continue this conversation any further, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Because I already have a couple of members that are kind of flustered and I'm getting that way myself.
I'm far from flustered.
Thanks a lot for the privilege.
I'm far from flustered, but I'm just telling you that this policy is brand new, has nothing to do with anything in the past.
You want to adopt the policy.
So I'm going to guess what you're talking about and it won't be difficult. But this certainly has nothing to do with anything in the past.
Thank you very much.
All right, Chris, we're moving on here. I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the town of Maynard municipal naming policy as, as published in the packet for May 19.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, we have a process. We get to keep our jobs. All right, next up is discussion of their 129 Parker Street fiscal analysis report that we got. And I'm guessing you're Judy Barrett?
I am.
You got the smile on your face? All right, why don't you take a seat up there? And just as a background, I'll remind people that back in March, the owners of, or the agents for the owners of 129 Parker Street came to us with a new idea for development at that site. And we noted that it differed from the previously approved plans and it differed from the current zoning and differed from the current development agreement. And so we're trying to determine whether, whether we should, you know, pursue those types of ideas and how much effort that would take and how much time that would take. But the first step in that decision process is really the basic, one of the basic ones, which is whether the project would be revenue positive to the town of Maynard. And so Kevin Sweet, the town administrator, engaged RKG associates to do a fiscal analysis. And we have Judy Barrett here tonight to present her draft report on the fiscal impact.
Okay.
So if I could ask you to introduce yourself and a little bit about your company and experience doing this and then...
Certainly.
Try to walk us through and...
Actually, I think I may recognize a few of you because I was here a couple of years ago when there was a proposal for Clock Tower Place. So some of you look very familiar to me. And it's nice to be back, by the way. When I was here a few years ago, I worked for a different firm. I used to be the planning director for a company in Boston for 17 years. I joined RKG two years ago, actually, three years ago now. RKG is an economics and real estate and planning firm with offices in New Hampshire, Massachusetts and Virginia. And I run the Massachusetts office, which is where most of the planning work is done. I've done probably, I don't know, 35 or 40 fiscal impact studies in my career. They're all different. I've never actually seen two properties that worked out exactly the same way. And so, you know, I looked at this, applied certain, I think, principles of the field to analyzing this, met with several of your staff, spoke with your assessor, who was a huge help in this process, spoke with Kevin, looked at the site, looked at a variety of information from the developer. I sent Kevin for you last week, a draft report. I actually have some updated numbers for you. So not knowing how many people might be here who would need what, I'm going to go through a few slides, which I happen to have in a handout. But I also have copies of the report as I gave it to you so that anybody who's here who hasn't seen it before would be able to follow along. And I don't quite know how you want me to distribute these.
Can you explain these? Summarize quickly, what's the changes? You've changed your draft?
Yes, there's more revenue. The revenue number is higher.
Because of a recalculation or a new thing that was...
Yeah, I had a question about the revenue estimate. And the assessor wasn't in on Friday when I was, when I needed to speak with her. So I went ahead and finished the report based on a more conservative estimate and it has since increased. So none of the costs have increased. The excise tax revenue has not increased. It's simply property tax revenue is up.
That's up because of a...
Of a difference in the formula in the assessor's workbook.
In the spreadsheet? It was because of a spreadsheet error from the assessors?
I was just, I'm not going to call it an error. It was just a formula difference that we recognized.
Yeah, I thought I noticed that in the, the last column of the table.
Yeah, right.
It was summed incorrectly.
Yeah, it was summed differently than I would have done it.
Like a 1.6 instead of a 1.3.
Yeah, exactly. So we are up on tax revenue by about $345,000.
On that estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's the only change. So I thought, which is significant, but I mean, it's, nothing else in that report has changed. So I don't know how you might like you to make these available.
Those are old reports, right? That's the...
This is the report that I submitted on Friday because I didn't want to change this until this evening. That is the original.
And that's the one we have posted on our website.
That is the existing report.
Got you.
This is the slides that I'm going to walk through tonight.
Okay.
Which explain the difference, okay? But I think the general comment I would make is that the, the net revenue is more beneficial to the town. It was already beneficial, it's just more beneficial now. So how do I control the slides? Do I just ask you to switch them along? Okay, well then, why don't you go to the first one? That would be great. I think that perhaps you've all seen this. Do you want me to hand these out?
Sure.
I think the board probably needs these first. I made 10 copies. So, you know, this is the project that I think you've all seen and this is what we looked at. And I want to just sort of break down for you kind of what these spaces mean because the size and the configuration of retail spaces has a, can have a significant impact on the assumptions that you make for the assessed value per foot. And so your assessor correctly did a pretty detailed breakdown of the different types of spaces in this plan. I'm looking this way, but I realize it's also up here. She did a fairly sophisticated breakdown to sort of acknowledge what those differences are. And I just want to point out to you that depending upon what the actual tenant mix is, some of these numbers could vary a little bit. For example, if you have an assumption that three retail spaces will be 20,000 square feet each, that's a certain class of retail. When you put them together to create one store, that's a different class of retail. So what we have to work with right now is what the developer has provided. I just want the board to know and the general public to understand that some of these numbers right up until the very end are going to be a little bit fluid because until the tenant mix is known, you have to make some, I think, conservative assumptions, okay? So this is the plan. And maybe you could just switch to the next slide. Just so everybody understands, you know, when I'm asked to do a fiscal impact analysis, the question that I'm trying to answer is, will this project pay for itself? Because if the project will not pay for itself, and it's going, that means it's going to generate more demand for services and increase in cost than the revenue it generates from taxes and so forth. So someone else pays. And sometimes communities choose to promote land uses that are what we would call fiscally negative because there are other kinds of benefits to those land uses. So there are lots of policy decisions that go into supporting or not supporting development beyond fiscal impact. But what, that's the question I'm trying to answer is, do I think this project, based on the best available information, will pay for itself? And the way we kind of express this relationship between costs and revenue is a revenue ratio. And just for the benefit of everybody here, if you have a ratio that is low, that's under one, what that means is it's less cost to revenue. If you have a ratio of one, that means that costs and, and revenue are in balance, they're the same, essentially the same. And if you have a ratio that's over one, it means that the costs are greater than the revenue. It's a ratio of cost to revenue. So we like to see a revenue ratio that's low. And we, you know, cringe a little bit if we see one that's high. But as I said, sometimes communities will go ahead and promote certain development policies even with a ratio that's, that's high because there are other advantages to those land uses. I mean, the most negative, fiscally negative land use out there is the detached single-family home. But I don't think there's a suburb in Massachusetts that wouldn't want to have single-family dwellings. Maybe you could go to the next, oh, here we are. Okay, so what did I look at? I looked at a project with the following components as presented to us by the proponent. A 65,000 square foot supermarket. There's a restaurant and retail mix in, in this plan that I showed you a few slides ago with a combined total of 163,000 square feet of space. There's a flex office component, which includes the existing building that's there for 80, around 83,000 square feet. Multifamily component with 200 units, that's 265,000 square feet of space, and 142 suites of independent senior housing. So...
Just to clarify that multifamily is rental?
I have assumed it's rental.
Okay.
Based, for the, for purposes of a fiscal impact analysis. In very strong markets, condominiums can generate more revenue than rental just because of the way they're assessed. But again, not knowing what the actual ownership arrangement would be at this juncture, my tendency would be to say it's rental and I'm going to be conservative. And that actually means a lower revenue estimate than it might be if someone were going to do condominiums. Are you following me on this?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a site of 58 acres and, you know, it's actually a fairly low-density project. I'm used to seeing people try to develop more space on a site like this. The floor area ratio is, is astonishingly low, .278, which means, you know, basically 27% of the total site is in floor space. So, you know, if it were a higher FAR, you'd probably see more revenue, but there are reasons to not do a higher FAR. So, but that's kind of a snapshot of the project. It consists of a grocery store, a retail space, some flex office type of uses, might be medical office, might be a fitness center. It's truly flexible space. The multifamily component and the senior living. So that's what I looked at. That's the basis for my analysis. If you could switch that slide. So this is just sort of a snapshot of what I concluded and I'll then try to talk to you about how I got to these numbers. The total cost of additional municipal services, my opinion, could be as high as $933,000. And I say as high because I tried to be conservative. I suspect if anything, the number might be a little less, but I don't like to mislead clients into a rosy picture. So, you know, the total of this is, is about $40,000 in, in general government types of costs. Public safety is really where the biggest hit is in this. I don't think that's any surprise to anybody in this room. I'm estimating the cost of that at about $390,000. Again, I'm rounding here for purposes of this presentation. Public works, somewhere in the order of $110,000 in additional costs. The schools at 347.3 and just other kinds of costs. If you're hiring additional personnel, there's employee benefits and so forth. And so I just sort of put that into a category of other and called that 46,000. And so the total is 93. My estimate of recurring revenue, now mind you, those are recurring costs. Those are costs that recur every year. You, you create this event, you create this new housing, you create this new retail space, there's a recurring demand on services. And in some cases, this is a, you know, a marginal increase. And I would say in the sake, in the, in the area of public safety, you're really looking at a marginal increase. But the recurring revenue ends up being at about 1.7 million and that is the sum of the assessor's current estimate, which is that 1.686 that's in the, that's, the reason these are highlighted text is that these are where the changes are. So the change is the recurring revenue estimate is now 1.7 based on the, 1.77, based on the assessor's revised estimate, which is now 1.686. The excise tax number has not changed. The net revenue therefore, which is the difference between total recurring revenue and total recurring cost, is about $837,000 per year. So the revenue ratio, now back to that device I explained earlier, is .53. And what that means is that for every $1 in revenue, you spend 53 cents on services. So that's kind of how that measure works. Revenue ratio is simply an expression of the relationship between costs and revenue. Do you have any questions before I move on or do you want me to just keep going?
Just keep going and then we'll do questions at the very end.
Okay, all right. So, and I just, again, because I knew that the assessor's number had changed, I wanted to just put up here for everybody how she arrived at those numbers. The assessed value number did not change. It's simply the assessed tax revenue because of a formula glitch.
I need to clarify that. The, we have in our packet a, a table listing and the value for each element, each building did not change. It was simply an error in the...
In the tax revenue.
Summing the total.
That's correct.
So all the pieces were all correct, they just...
That's correct. It was just a formula glitch.
The formula was wrong.
So it was.
The sum of the total.
You have, you know, she was trying so hard to keep track of comparing her numbers to the developers and it was just a formula glitch. It's, it's fine. These things happen in these projects. So with that revised number, I just want you to see how she got to that and so how everybody else in the room can see how she got to that because that, I'm using that number. It isn't all that often that I get to work with an assessor who's so responsive, but she really was great. So that is my revenue, my, my property tax revenue number. Of course, this does not include personal property. It is strictly real estate taxes. It's premature to try to estimate what personal property revenue, if anything, would come out of this development. So we're just, again, being conservative and saying it's 1.6 on real estate taxes. So let me tell you how we get to some of these numbers. No matter what kind of project I'm asked to evaluate, the first thing I do is a, what's called a proportional valuation analysis. Proportional valuation is based on a theory tested for 45 years and frankly, I usually find that it's pretty accurate. The theory is that there is a proportional relationship between the assessed value, not the tax revenue, because that can be, you know, adjusted by tax rate. But the relationship between the assessed value of a land use versus the total. So if I'm 30% of the assessed value of the town and I'm commercial tax base, I'm probably responsible for about 30% of the cost of services. Now, the difficulty with that is that depending upon the size and scale of the tax base and the average value per parcel, it could, it could vary some. So what we do in proportional valuation analysis is we refine those ratios. If we're 30%, but the average parcel is actually much greater than the average parcel for the town as a whole, the average commercial parcel is dramatically different from the average parcel for the town as a whole, taking all parcels and dividing that into entire assessed value. If there's a big gap between them, there are a series of what we call refinement coefficients that allow us to adjust for scale. In very small towns, sometimes you might have a couple of significant non-residential land uses that drive the percentage of assessed value. And if you just sort of assumed that that was the cost generator for all commercial uses, you might really end up with a distorted picture. So out of the Center for Urban Planning Studies at Rutgers, there are these refinement coefficients that are published from time to time. And we use those to make adjustments to this proportional relationship. But we always start there, even if it's a residential project that we're studying. And the reason for that is you have to figure out how to separate out of the municipality's cost structure, costs that are not residential. Otherwise, you could assume that everything you're doing is driven by, by residential land uses and your assumptions about per capita cost could be wrong. So we always start with proportional valuation and I did that first. So there's two steps to that. One is figuring out what is the existing base? How much of the existing commercial and industrial tax base is responsible for total cost? And then once you arrive at that, the second part of the analysis is, so now I have this new project and it's assessed at something, you know? And what's the relationship between that and the current base? And so there's two steps to this process and we did that first. And so I did the proportional valuation analysis and the numbers that I showed on that slide earlier, you know, I think it would just be safe to say that if you're looking at the municipal costs only, just separate out the schools, the, the commercial components in this are driving 40 to 45% of the cost. And it's mainly because of public safety. It's mainly because of public safety. So I did that, but then I also have this rule of thumb, which I've done and I think a lot of analysts do, over the years, every time I've done one of these studies, I've said, okay, so now I'm going to go back and I'm going to look at what actually happened. Because you can sort of deceive yourself into thinking... Because you can sort of deceive yourself into thinking you're, you kind of know it all, right? Unless you actually go back and see what happened as a result of a project being constructed that you studied and, and try to gather information on, so what is actually the impact of that project? And how can I break that down to a cost per square foot? If I say this project is, project is generating $250,000 in police and fire costs, and I've got a project of X size, how do I convert that to a cost per square foot? So I can kind of use that as a test in the future. And I've developed that database over 20, 25 years. And so I did this rule of thumb analysis as well. I took their commercial space and I multiplied it by those assumptions for, for cost per foot. And as you can see in the report, it's actually very close to proportional value. So I felt pretty good about, about my sense of what the commercial component would probably cost. And that then made me look to the residential side, and you have two residential components here. One is multifamily housing that's not age-restricted, and the other is senior housing. And we used to estimate, we have to estimate the household population, because now when you're moving into a residential use, you have to think about, about people generating a cost. And so you try to estimate, what's the household population going to be? And in the case of regular old housing, it's how many school-aged children do you think will be there? And so we benefit today from that same program at Rutgers periodically produces updated household size and school-aged children multipliers based on data from the Census Bureau for different regions. And so we have them from Massachusetts. I actually looked at your own census data just to try to get a sense of how reliable the state numbers were. They looked pretty good to me, so I used them. And that, we did that to try to estimate the cost per person in the multifamily development for public safety, public works, and, and school costs. Those are sort of per capita or per student costs. For the senior housing, it's a little different creature. I'm not really worried about whether there are one or two people in a senior independent living unit. I'm more concerned about, here's a household, and we know certain things about the, the needs for municipal services of senior households. I had data, your fire chief had data, and the data all lined up just perfectly, almost. On average, what we find with senior housing is that you generate about one call per unit per year, well, one call per household per year for emergency medical services. And that may not sound like much until you compare it to a single-family home, which, you know, could be much, much less than that. So, you know, that, there's a cost here for emergency medical that I think the town needs to understand, that when you build senior housing, you don't get school-aged children, but you get a different type of impact. And that's really what's driving most of the public safety assumptions in here. The police chief didn't actually see, foresee a big impact on his department when I spoke with him, because since you've gone to civilian dispatch, I think he's picked up some capacity that he didn't have before. Not that he's not concerned, traffic impact could certainly draw police to this project. What he said, however, your police chief used to be on the police department in Shrewsbury, which is one of my longstanding clients, and I've done lots of work in Shrewsbury. And so we were able to talk about projects in Shrewsbury that he was very familiar with. One of the things that I find, and he definitely has seen as well, is that the impact of these developments, these sort of lifestyle centers, a lot of it comes down to management. And it's really true with multifamily housing, too. When you have a well-managed project, you don't have a lot of police calls. When you have a badly managed project, you have public safety problems. There are stores in Shrewsbury and other towns that don't have a very good security policy, don't have great management, and the police are called all the time. You have other stores where their demand isn't so great. So it's a little bit difficult to estimate, sort of on a retail base-wide, what the cost would be for public safety. Therefore, I tend to estimate conservatively. But just so you know, those kinds of things matter, and if I were in your shoes, and I'm not John Witten's shoes, but if I were, John were in the room, I'd say, I think when you're trying to negotiate a development agreement for this, one of the things you want to pay attention to is management of the project. You know, what's going to be the capacity for management? Because that's going to help to mitigate the number of calls generated by the commercial space, especially the retail. It will help to mitigate the activity in the multifamily development. It is not going to have any impact at all on the senior housing. The fact is, if people dial 911, your fire department has to respond, or police department. I mean, if it's an emergency medical call, the fire department has to respond. So we just kind of know from senior housing, whether it's independent living or assisted living, they could have staff, whatever, if people call because they're concerned about their own safety or whatever, your, your staff have to respond. So I think that's kind of where the real impact is in this project. I think the school estimate, cost estimate's probably high. If you had 34 children coming into your school district, you wouldn't be hiring four or five teachers. You might hire a couple. It depends on where the kids hit age level. My experience with multifamily housing is that the children tend to be younger than the distribution for housing overall in a community. Typically, you have a split in traditional single-family bases of elementary, middle, and high school. In rental housing, we tend to see a larger percentage of children in the elementary level. It's just the nature of the beast. By the time people are, their kids are getting a little older, if they're moving into homeownership, you know, you don't find that many older children in rental housing, but you'll find little ones. So it all depends on what grade level they hit. But even if it's 34 children all coming into second or third grade, you're looking at probably two teachers, which is not $345,000. So, you know, I just think the school costs are, give you a big comfort margin, the way I've estimated them. And that's really, you know, as I've set up here, the way we approach this, that any sort of per capita basis or per student basis tends to throw sort of a near-term high cost, probably higher than your experience. Longer term, the costs tend to bear out well. But I think it's fair to do it this way, given that these are, they're unknowns, and the project really is conceptual still at this point. Is that it? I think that's the last slide, isn't it?
One more.
Is there one more?
Caveats.
Oh, yeah. My caveats, yes. Yeah. Source of demands, I already kind of covered this a little bit. In 200 units, my population estimate, my household population estimate is 508 people. I'm estimating 34 school-aged children. The senior housing, the demand is going to come from the households, that's how I measured it. The retail component is what's going to drive the demand for public safety more than anything else. And that, in my opinion, is where the primary impact would be, and I don't think that's a big surprise to anybody. Now, my, as for my caveats, I really have to say this. I've learned the hard way, as a fiscal impact analyst, that I have to provide you with the following out clause. My job is to try to estimate where I think the impacts are going to be, and to try to put a number on that, so you can plan. But I can't, I, I'm not your town meeting, I'm not your finance committee, I'm not you guys. So if this project is built or something like it, and your revenue increases the way I estimate, or that Angie and I both estimate that it will, somebody's going to get to make a decision, well, how are we investing this, these funds? And what I often find, when I go back and look at projects that I study, is my gosh, the impacts really happened, and they weren't mitigated, because instead of putting the money into additional police or additional firefighters or wherever that impact was going to be, communities did what most towns do. What do they do with additional revenue? They put it into their schools. So I'm not saying you shouldn't spend on your schools, I'm just saying that you need to be aware, that all I can do is try to forecast for you where I think the impacts will be, but whether you choose to mitigate those impacts with the revenue from the project is a local policy decision. That's my last slide.
Hey.
So I'm happy to answer, you know, any questions you may have, and I certainly will give you a revised report. I just didn't want to do any more with it until we had a chance to talk tonight and see if there was something else you wanted me to do.
No, that's, that's fine. And at our next meeting, we're going to be getting into the project discussion in more detail. So what I'm hoping for tonight is that we can pepper you with enough questions that we fully understand your report, and we're all on the same page
Sure.
Regarding that.
Yep.
So I got my list up to eight questions, but I'll start with one.
You may start wherever you
And the question is, the, the gross real estate tax revenue number
Yep.
Of 1,686 that you got from Angie, is that net of what they currently pay?
No, it's not. And I actually have that number, and I can't seem to open it on my iPad.
Like 102.5 or something.
Yeah. I mean, if you want a true net, here's, here's the issue. If you want a true net, I have to look not only at what the existing revenue is, but I have to assign cost to the existing land use as well. And people may think that when you've got this sort of disturbed piece of land that nobody's using, that there's no cost, but that's not really true. There is no such thing as a, as a cost-free land use. So if you want a true net, then, then I need to think about cost as well as revenue, and I generally don't do that unless people really want it. The question that I answer, which is what I said at the beginning, is can this project pay for itself? That's what I, that's the question I'm trying to answer.
Okay. I'm going to do one more
It's okay.
Question, and hand it off to the rest of the board, and probably come back. Actually, there's a question to Kevin.
The EMS responses to assisted living, don't we get paid for those?
Yeah, that was actually my, my question for Judy, but I guess we'll answer that now.
I don't actually have that reference.
Yeah, I know.
I'll tell you why.
Particularly because you highlighted the extensive costs directed to public safety and EMS response, and the one call per unit per year.
Yep.
And the question I had is if there's data that we could do our own numbers to determine how much of that results in transportation.
That is the issue.
And so the answer is, yeah, we get paid for it if it's, if it's a BLS
Yes.
Response in transport. We do not get paid for any services that end up becoming either no transport or an ALS advanced, for the audience, basic life support versus advanced life support. Basic life support is done through the Maynard Fire Department and Maynard EMS. Advanced life support is done through agreement we have with Pro EMS, and they serve as an intercept vehicle.
Yep.
Both require the same level of Maynard services.
Response, yep.
Because even if it is a, an ALS, it's still Maynard's ambulance that leaves town. It just has that advanced care paramedic. So the answer is, we do, we do get billing, we have increased the rates by 10%, and we do get the receipts only if there's a BLS transport.
Okay. And so your number was roughly $100,000, I believe, for assisted living and
Yeah, I think it was a little higher than that. I think it was a little higher than that, but that's fine.
And so some of that would recoup, would be
Some of that you would recoup. What I, what I hear, my experience with fire chiefs in other communities where there's a lot of senior housing, is that many of the calls do not result in a reimbursement, because people call for different reasons, and they don't all necessarily need emergency medical services that require transport. People fall, people are afraid. Sometimes it's just a non-emergency type of situation, and that is just the nature of senior housing. I think it's something that every community really needs to be kind of bracing for, because you're going to see more people like me in a few years, and
So we could probably do some back-of-the-envelope calculations. We know that our ambulance receipts is between 260 and 340, depending on the average, you know, the average year is about $300,000.
Yep.
Based on call volume, et cetera, we could probably come up with some hypothetical number, but
It sounds like the chief is pretty knowledgeable.
He is. He's done a lot of research leading up to this, and particularly with the old proposals that were submitted showing, not only, this was shown as an independent living, I think there's a different impact if it's a assisted living facility. It might have more critical care, you know, patients that may be getting transported, it may fluctuate that response, too, but I know he does definitely have some good data on it. But there certainly is some, some amount of revenue that would get recaptured in that 390.
Right. And, and there is, and I think if we can develop something you can live with, I'm happy to add that. Again, I'm just trying to be very conservative, but, but certainly you would see some revenue from those calls. I do not believe that you will recoup 100% of your cost.
All right, very good. So I'm going to kick it over to Jason, you have
Yeah, actually, thank you.
Start off with one or two questions.
I'm going to follow up your question there with, and I'm just reaching here. Wouldn't a managed, assisted or independent living facility that has staff generate fewer calls because you're not, than a single, than seniors living alone or together in a single-family home?
If they have phones in their rooms, and they choose to call, they will call, and sometimes the staff are not adequately trained or prepared. I've heard this a lot from fire departments in other communities. You know, that was what I said, management and senior living, I think it's a different creature from management of multifamily housing or management of retail stores. You're dealing with a population that is independent, therefore can pick up the phone call
Sure.
But may not necessarily be equipped to make the judgment necessary, do I really need to make this call? And I think, I'm not casting aspersions on any, any folks who manage senior housing, but I think the skill level varies a lot. And that's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Okay. So, I mean, I guess it's fair to say then, it's not, other than the sheer concentration of potentially seniors living in an area, if you have 2,000 seniors in single-family homes and 2,000 seniors in an assisted living facility, the number of calls would be commiserate?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm actually speaking on that very issue at a conference in two months. You're absolutely right. You know, and so there's real kind of policy issues, you know? Do you, do you basically geographically distribute these calls all the time so the fire department has no way to plan? Or do you try to concentrate the activity? It's, it's, it's a difficult question, but I would expect you would see about the same number of calls, they're just not as noticeable.
Yeah, another one, Jason?
Yeah, I was curious, what, what is in the public works?
Oh, you try to do an estimate of, you know, addition, like traffic impacts. You've got additional road mile, you know, travel, and there's a, if there's a cost to maintain the road that increases when you've got more traffic activity on the road. It's, it's managed development, generally, some costs that public works typically covers, or services that typically provides for single-family residences, for example, you don't necessarily see, I'm thinking about trash disposal or something, often that gets managed on a private basis. And things like water and sewer would not be included in that number, because this is general fund. That's probably another thing I should just make clear. Fiscal impact analysis always looks at general fund costs, does not look at enterprise costs, and the logic is that an enterprise fund is typically supposed to be, you know, a cost, the revenue coming in is equal to the cost of the service, so you're not looking at a tax rate impact the way you are with general fund. But you need to do something, yeah, you need to do something about just acknowledging that when you have an increase in traffic, you have an increase in wear and care on a road, and, and there's an impact on the public works spokes.
All right.
Increase in calls from people calling about, you know, a squirrel in the attic or something, so, whatever.
David, question or two for you?
Uh, yeah, I'm really more interested in listening tonight, but, uh, where was I going with my question? I had one.
We can skip you.
Yeah, skip me for now.
Chris, one or two questions?
Yeah, one of the questions is the FAR, the floor space ratio?
Yeah.
So 2.278, that's the buildings, that's the buildings.
That's the building square feet relative to the size of the site.
Well, I mean, I guess if this is going to be something that people are going to see, it would seem that that would be a little bit deceptive in that, does it include parking areas, sidewalks?
It's not a coverage ratio.
Landscaping?
It's not a coverage ratio.
Okay, so, well
It's, it's really a measure of the intensity of use of a site.
Okay. And I'm, I'm just asking because it
Sure.
Those, you know, people are going to say, oh, they're all using 25% of it.
Yeah.
Well, that's not the case.
That's correct. It's not a coverage ratio.
To the undereducated, some of us might be, that, that would seem to be an important fact for some people that might look at this and say the same thing, but
I'm happy to explain that. That's a perfectly valid question.
So where do we, do you have a, an idea or a suggestion as to what those other things make up in addition to the .278?
Well, the .278 includes all floors in a building. It's not just, it's not coverage. It's the total square feet and whatever number of floors you have, divided by the size of the site.
If I could clarify something, the FAR is a, is a term, and it's defined by the building footprint on the whole property. You're talking about coverage, or a different term, that is, the parking footprint
Right.
All the other stuff. That's a different term.
That's right. I understand that.
FAR is the building footprint.
I understand. My, the question really is what, do you know what the, do you have a guess as to what
My, the question really is what, do you know what the, do you have a guess as to what the total use of the spaces?
I, I have not calculated the coverage.
All those landscaping and all that?
I have not calculated the coverage ratio and I'm gonna look back at your town planner not to put him on the hot seat, but do you know if a coverage ratio has been calculated for this project?
I do not.
Okay. I mean, I think we can, we can estimate it, at least, I mean, we're planners, we should be able to do that.
Yeah, the developer, no, we've just gotta figure it out.
Okay, the other question I have is, we talked about DPW and public safety quite a bit, do you in this, for the purpose of this report, assume, or do we, should we assume that the cost of any public, you know, DPW or public safety improvements are borne by the town?
No. What this is saying is these land uses will create a demand for services that are equal to a certain cost.
Okay.
The cost of those services. And the question the study asks is, can this project generate enough revenue to pay for those costs? If the answer were no, then the town would be picking up some cost. But the answer is yes, it can pay for itself, therefore the town is not picking up cost.
So is that include any need, potential need for traffic signals, widening, widening of roads and those, are those type of things included in that assumption?
Those types of costs are typically not included in a fiscal impact analysis because they are typically handled by the project as a requirement in order to build.
Okay.
So if someone has to widen a road, you know, that applicant has to do that in order to build the project. So we would not assume that there's a cost to the town for that. Now, if you said to me, we have to widen the road and the applicant's not providing any money, that would be the first time, honest to God, I've ever heard that happen. But if it did, then I need to know that and I will add a cost for, for, for that. But you know, it becomes a question of is this a one-time capital cost? Is this something that you pay, that you're gonna do, a big project that requires debt service, then I'm gonna add debt service to the cost. But I think really, even if you add in, even if you had to do that, which I don't know why you would, but if you did, you have to look at what's the net revenue here?
Well, I don't know why we would either, but I'm just, it's just like, you know.
I wouldn't do it. I would just tell the applicant, you wanna build this project, this is your responsibility. I mean, these are experienced developers, it's not news to them that they have to, if you need to increase the capacity of a road, that's their problem.
And all those numbers and discussion happens after a heavy-duty traffic analysis and lots of peer review.
Well, exactly, you know, and you don't have a traffic analysis on this particular mode, but you do have traffic studies on, I think, some of the earlier ones, so I did look at those. I mean, you know, there's gonna be a traffic increase. You have retail, you have commercial space, you're gonna have a traffic increase. You're gonna, retail is gonna generate more traffic than the housing.
Mm-hmm.
So there will be a traffic impact, but what I'm saying is that for this, for a project of this scale, the applicant needs to, to make whatever improvements are necessary to support the project. That's not the town's responsibility. If you decide you wanna do it, then I need to know what the cost of that is gonna be, which I assume you have a town engineer or somebody who would've figured that out, and I'll, I'll add it in as debt service. But I maintain, you need to look at the net revenue here and ask yourself, do you really think you're gonna chew up $700,000 or $800,000 in net revenue on debt service to widen a road or whatever you think it's gonna be? I mean, that's a lot of money.
Based on prior action, I'm pretty sure the town is not gonna be paying for any mitigation.
I think so too. If I were selectmen, I'd say, are you kidding me?
Um, David, you, you.
Did your, your revenue assumptions include meals tax?
Um, you know, I did not put the meals tax in because, and I'll tell you why I thought about it. And I know that an earlier study of, I think one of the other possibilities for this site may have included that. Because this is a conceptual plan and we don't really know how much, how much restaurant space there's gonna be here. I'm reluctant to put a number on this and say, you're gonna generate X amount of meals tax based on X amount of restaurant space when I don't really know that that's going to happen. I'm more than happy, if you want me to, to make a conservative assumption, but I want you to know why I didn't. I'm looking at a plan with boxes on it that say retail, 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 X different types of spaces. I know what the developers' assumptions are, they make market sense to me, but until the tenant mix is really known, I'm, I'm just trying to be conservative.
So just to follow up on that, so assuming you asked there was a definitive project and, you know, that was known, there is a way to calculate it?
Yeah, there, there should be. I mean, you would be, you would be making an estimate of sales for restaurant space.
Cause I, and you don't have to give a big answer, I was just kinda curious, given the proximity of the restaurants, the existing restaurants downtown, I was trying to figure out if some of it would be cannibalized from those sales or, you know, how that calculated.
Well, you could do an economic impact analysis. I, I have to tell you, I, I think, I'll give you an example of where I think that risk could have existed and with, through some smart leadership on the town's part and a cooperative developer, I think that a lot of things, bad things did not happen and that's Legacy Place in Dedham, which I reviewed for the Dedham Planning Board. And everybody was very afraid there that Dedham Square, which is a really cool little town center with some neat kind of niche restaurants and, you know, just really cool space, was going to end up losing business because of Legacy Place. And so part of the whole development agreement for that project and the mitigation that was planned was, was basically wayfinding signage for people to get off the highway and go into the center of town to find that, the theater that's like a dinner theater place. And, and a lot of sort of advertising of the, of the Dedham Square businesses within Legacy Place. And conversely, advertising in Dedham Square for Legacy Place. So there was a lot of cooperation that happened there. And I think that any community that's kinda concerned about the impact on some other businesses in town, my general experience is if you're bringing more people into your community, it benefits the businesses that are there. Now, there, it's also true that sometimes when competition occurs, people with an existing business have to reposition themselves. That, that sometimes does happen. But I don't know that that's the responsibility of local government as much as it is for a smart business owner to figure out, I've got this new economic event here and 500 more people living in the community and 142 senior households and people coming in and out for retail, how do I capture some of that? And you might wanna have a conversation about that with Capital Properties Group and your town council in thinking about kind of mitigation for the businesses in the center of town. I, I don't, off the top of my head, I can't tell you that restaurant activity here will inherently cannibalize what you already have. It, it could benefit it.
All right. Well, one of the things I was fishing for is for you to tell us that we were doing the right thing by asking for additional liquor licenses so they wouldn't be transferred from downtown to the site. So we just expand the market opportunities.
I don't know why you wouldn't. I mean, you want businesses to be successful. People drink.
They do.
Sorry, but they do. People drink, so, you know.
Some communities more.
I can't believe I just said that, but I did.
It's all right, it's only on TV.
The housing numbers are pretty definite, but say the number of school-aged children are considerably larger, what impact would that have? What should we focus more on?
Well, you know, my experience is those numbers kinda can vary anywhere like around 10% up or down in any given year. In the recession, when homeownership dropped, we actually saw the number of children in rental housing go up because people weren't moving out the way they were. The, the first time homebuyer opportunities really collapsed. So we saw the numbers go up, they seemed to have stabilized again. You know, you certainly could have more, you could have fewer. I, I reiterate that given the net revenue for this project, it would take a lot of kids to create a problem that you could not handle. But I, I also will tell you, it really largely depends on what grade level the children end up in. If you've got 34 children spread out over 12 grades kind of equally, you don't even know they're there. If you have 34 children divided equally between first and second grade, you know, there's an impact and depending upon the size of those grades, it certainly is conceivable that you may need to hire another teacher or two. But I, given the cost that's been assigned for schools to this, I think we've covered it.
And would that heavy-duty traffic study include something along the lines of looking at parking in terms of meters and maybe permits just to drive the revenue a little bit?
Well, is it gonna be a public lot? I mean, are you gonna provide, are you gonna have some kind of sharing there for public spaces? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, you know, the living space and the retail are different lots, so I was.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Well, they have to provide dedicated, let me put it this way, if they wanna get financing, they have to be able to show that they have enough parking for the residents, enough parking for the senior housing, and enough parking for the businesses. No matter what you say or what your zoning says, the banks, I hate to say it, ultimately determine this. Can I get financing? And so they have to be able to persuade the bank, personally, my own opinion, there's too much parking on this site, but, you know, there's a lot of parking there. Huge parking lot. Can't imagine there's not enough parking.
That may be our zoning.
Well, it might be, but I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just here to do a fiscal impact analysis, right? I guess I should just stop being a planner for now.
That's all right.
I am a planner. I looked at the plan, I said, oh my word, I have never seen so much parking except in a Walmart lot.
Yep.
So to your concern about coverage, I'm less concerned about floor space than I am just pavement, but.
So let me continue the discussion of housing population and schoolchildren.
Sure, yep.
And we probably have 50-plus housing units coming on this year and we got, the mill is zoned already for 400 or so units and, so I'm really interested in the ratios that you had in table five on page seven, cause I thought you said, you know, you used Rutgers' numbers, but there were a couple categories they didn't have, so you used your own? I was just trying to understand which are which.
Yeah, they, Rutgers does not have a number for three-bedroom units that are over, that are market rate, as I recall.
Oh, three-bedroom market?
Yeah, three-bedroom market, they don't, they don't, at the three-bedroom level, there isn't a multiplier there for, that distinguishes by rent. So I was looking at rent level, different rent levels because the affordable units will tend to generate more children than the market units.
Mm-hmm.
So what I did, just so you know, I actually know how to do what Rutgers does. We, the Census Bureau produces a database called the Public User Microdata Sets, PUMS, for Public User Microdata Areas that are collections of a few communities or if it's a city, it might be its own PUMA, if you will. I'm gonna start throwing acronyms that you know. You can get the original records from the Census Bureau and cross-tabulate them. And that's exactly what those multipliers are from Rutgers. They are cross-tabulating household type by house, by number of people in the household by the cost of the housing. And they report that because we all know, being in this business, that the more expensive the housing, generally the fewer children there are, except in single-family homes, all of that breaks down. But in multifamily dwellings, the more expensive the housing, the fewer the children. There's a point at which people can afford to buy a house, so they're not living in multifamily developments. So I, I just went ahead and got the PUMS data for your PUMA and I cross-tabulated them myself in SPSS and that's how I came up with the number. So I, I was able to fill in what they didn't have.
Were you able to match their number for the, the affordable?
Yeah, yeah, the, my, I absolutely agree with their multipliers for, for the lower rent units. That looks right to me.
Okay. All right. Back to you, Jason. Got another question?
Actually, I did and I just found the answer, so I'll bore you with it.
That's fine. I got a few more.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Slightly deviating from the fiscal analysis, but taking advantage of your knowledge, these are independent living things, are they, are they sized according to a model? I mean, the number they have there, is that the business model for that or could it get bigger or smaller?
Well, I think the whole senior housing industry is worth watching because I can think of truly independent living developments that have had trouble, you know, filling up and really had to kind of be repositioned with, I've seen this in a couple of cases, projects that in order to reach the market and secure the market, ended up needing to become more like a continuum of care, continuing care model with some assisted living built into the project so people really kind of can stay in place. I'm, I'm moving here, I'm not, I don't plan to leave again unless I'm leaving in a casket. So I, I've seen some of that happen. I'm not sure why this particular project is looking at independent only units. It's, it's out there as a model, but I, there are a few not far from here that have had to change their business model because they had trouble selling the units.
Mr. Chair, I could add to that, just knowing the project, that the proposed independent living is very specific because it's for a very specific interested party. The developer themselves has no experience in doing this, they would, they would essentially carve it off and sell it to this particular vendor that is lined up.
Right.
That's already expressed a strong interest. So that number is very specific for this one, if, I think if you remember, if you go back to other ones, it was somewhere from 90 to 110.
Yeah.
It's now at 142 because of the specific needs request by this one individual vendor that, that would be looking to do the, the project. So that, that number is very specific based on who they anticipate putting in there.
Yeah.
The reason for the project, I think, was because of a desire from a number of inputs from residents and the work, you know, the ADHOC committee group, working with the visioning charrettes, et cetera, that kind of came out of that. But the original proposal or concept, I think, was 90 to 110.
That, that sounds about right. You know, the multiples of 30 and 60 are typically what you tend to see, so, you know, I, I'm not critical of their number. I, I guess my only comment would be, if someone is saying, I wanna do 142 units, chances are they've done a market study because it's harder and harder to get these projects financed.
Mm-hmm.
So you know. But, you know, it, it could certainly come to pass that by the time this project actually moves forward, that the developer may come and talk to you about wanting to diversify what that elderly component looks like. And I don't think it's a problem, it's just something to be aware of, that the banks are really watching these projects very carefully. And the market, I think, you know, at least in many other cases, I won't comment on the marketability of this project because I don't have that information, but in other cases I'm familiar with, it's kind of come right up to, I'm ready to close now on this deal and the bank's gonna require me to, to include other components that I don't have in my project, like assisted living. But, and you know, the other thing too, I think, to bear in mind is that although there may be a lot of interest in the community from seniors, I don't know where the interest was coming from, Kevin, but what actually, the actual determining factor for who lives in these projects tends to be the adult children, whose parents live in Connecticut or something and they wanna bring them closer because they can't take care of them.
Yeah, I know of places even in our area that have not only all-in-one-spot assisted living, independent living, assisted living and critical care units where somebody who gets, they don't want them to go to a nursing home and they want them to be close by and it's all combined and they work fabulously for the people who are affected.
Well, they do. No, I mean, they're wonderful and, and you know, it's, it would not have a negative impact on the revenue from the project. I guess I should just make that clear.
And very much service, serves that niche of people who have, for Alzheimer's patients or whatever that actually are.
Simply frail elders. I mean, with or without Alzheimer's, right, right.
I'm looking to try to figure out the revenue ratio by use and.
Oh, you want a revenue ratio for each land use?
Yeah, but I'm just trying to figure out, it's probably, you know, the precision's probably not accurate if you busted up more than, what, retail, housing and office?
Yeah.
I mean, I, you couldn't break it down to retail, supermarket, retail, other or anything, right?
Well, you know, I didn't do it that way. I think that there's a point where it just starts to get a little bit too muddy.
Yeah, that's.
But I mean, you could do a retail revenue ratio, you can do a, a flex space revenue ratio. Flex space is gonna be the lowest ratio in the, in the site. I absolutely guarantee you.
I mean, just looking at it kinda looked like housing was, but maybe.
Well, I mean, housing's gonna generate a lot of revenue, but housing also generates cost. But flex space doesn't generate much revenue, it also generates very little cost. So that's the other thing about fiscal impact studies that I should explain, sometimes something can have a very low revenue ratio and it looks like great, until you look at the net revenue and the net revenue is really lame. So you kinda wanna pay attention to both. The ratio is a way of expressing a relationship, but it doesn't really tell you whether this is a cash cow. The cash cow answer is, what's the net revenue?
Can you just give me, I'm uneducated in this, for what's, what do you mean by flex space when you speak?
Flex space is space that's designed for a different, for a variety of tenant mixes.
Okay.
And it might be medical office space, it might be a fitness club. It could be professional office space.
Okay. Just not dedicated to specifically retail or, okay, got it.
Right, but probably not retail space.
Okay.
Because it was not gonna be located in a part of the site that would tend to be advantageous for retail.
Do you have another question? David?
No.
Chris?
Good.
Tim?
Nope.
All right, back to me.
Nice.
Let's see here, just a question about the assessor's information that was provided to you. Seemed like the memo referenced a full report? I mean, we just saw a spreadsheet table, there, is there more to it? Did you get?
From the assessor?
A memo or something from the assessor?
I don't think so. I think she gave us a word.
No, that's always provided to.
It was just the table?
Assessors, assessors deal in the world of Excel.
And on that spreadsheet, it referred to Angie's numbers, who I know who Angie is, and Bob, was that Bob De Petrie?
Yes, um, the developer had, as I understand it, you know, created their own estimate, which I still haven't even looked at, because I just don't pay attention to those numbers. But, you know, the assessor was trying to compare where she thought the project would fall versus what the developer was, was thinking. And I know there's a difference, but I was paying attention to her numbers, because my sense is that those are probably the most accurate.
Yeah, well, actually, I was just glad his numbers were on there, because...
Yeah, you can see.
Had lower value and higher revenues than the town estimate, that's why I realized there was a formula error in there somewhere.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And I, I really, I knew that it was there, but without being able to speak to her, I wasn't going to substitute my judgment, so I figured I'll just give you a conservative report, and we'll adjust it by Tuesday night, which is what we've done.
I got you.
So, needless to say, I will give you a revised report, I just haven't done it yet.
Another question I have is just to, um, I don't know, pick your brain maybe a little bit more, but you mentioned caution on development agreement regarding management of, of retail and housing. I know we have John Whitten on board, who'd be very good at development agreement, but you got any other pointers on, uh, the must-haves in a development agreement, the things that I don't want to mess up?
Well, yeah, actually, I do, um, if you want, you want to hear them. I would, um, I worked with Hopington on the development agreement for Legacy Farms, and one of the things that we built into that was a way for the town to have some assurance that the most favorable, fiscally favorable space was not falling behind the land uses that might generate more costs. So, you might want to just think about a way to say, you know, we know, we know you need to build the housing. They, they need to build the housing on this site, but you got to build a certain amount of retail space in conjunction with that, so that you don't end up with a land use that may not be quite as beneficial while the rest of the space is being built out. So, just, you know, I can give you some way of, a framework for thinking about that if you want. It actually is a way of kind of converting these land uses to a cost per foot, so you can compare, almost like a revenue ratio per foot, if you will, so that you can say, "Look, in order for you to make sure that you're covering the cost of, of the senior housing or the multifamily units, you need to build X number of square feet of commercial space for every N units of housing." We, we did that. I mean, it's, it was an interesting model, I think that it has probably helped Hopington, but you know, markets change, and it's certainly changed with Legacy Farms, so...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it changed a lot. So, um, I, I think you want to use some common sense, but I would say, it seems to me, just from what I've heard, that I think the developer seems kind of anxious to get something going here in order to not lose the grocery store. So, I think you're probably in a good position to negotiate with him around the timing of the commercial space, so that you don't end up with a bunch of housing and no, no commercial benefit.
Good.
It's just something to consider.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Kevin, you getting questions on the, uh, the memo?
Uh, no, no questions, um, just a couple of comments, more so probably for the audience, um, with regards to the draft report and the, uh, level or scope of services that was requested of RKG, um, which was approved, reviewed by the Board of Selectmen in, in the level. Um, at this point, we were looking at some initial fiscal impact analysis, obviously we wanted to look at, um, you know, to determine that it was a viable project to move forward. We, we made conscious decisions on, with regards to traffic, um, studies, et cetera. There's some utility stuff that's left out of this, um, by, you know, by the, again, discussion of the scope, um, whether it be for water, sewer, utility billing, things like that. As we get, as the, um, project likely moves forward, all that stuff will be required again, and it, and it, the, the bigger piece behind that is that the developer will bear that cost. Right now, the town is paying for this analysis, and, um, you know, the scope was, uh, methodically, uh, designed that way, understanding that there are things that are left out of this report that, um, you know, will, will be, uh, further evaluated, so, just so folks are in this, because, you know, we're coming now, two, from two months ago, uh, where we are today. So, that's, uh, I don't know if you want to add any more to that, but that's, uh, just so, um, the community and residents.
More numbers to come.
More numbers to come.
From our people.
We recognize this isn't a comprehensive, um, analysis when it comes to specifically water, sewer, traffic, those things.
Oh, it isn't, no. It is strictly fiscal, tax policy, that's what it's about. So, the enterprise sort of, you know, arrangement of utilities and so forth, no, that's not addressed here.
Right, I mean, just, you know, you captured one-time revenue fees even for a building permits, but what's not captured, for instance, is a water sewer connection, just on two hundred, two hundred units is a million dollars. So, there's other one-time revenues, there's other, um...
But those are going to flow to enterprise, yes?
Yeah, that's all enterprise, not on the, uh, yeah, so, I just wanted to get that out there, so...
If you want me to, when I give you the final report, I can sort of acknowledge what this does not address, if that would be helpful to you to make it clear, so that as people hear more numbers coming in the future, they won't be confused, if you want me to do that.
It might be, I just don't, I don't want the, the general, uh, public to, you know, look at this, you know, however many pages, and think this is a comprehensive, uh, economic fiscal analysis for, you know, the entire project.
Right. It, it's fiscal, but it's not a complete economic analysis. Right.
That's a good point. So, we're going to be talking about this again at our next meeting, so between now and then, what revisions could you do to the draft? You could update the typo on the tax thing.
I'm going to update the revenue estimate. I feel like I should probably put a little more text in here about methodology. If you want me to try to estimate Neil's tax, I can do that.
Is it a big number?
Probably not, but if you want to account for it, if you want to account for it, I will.
I don't want to get too precise for a small number.
Seventy percent.
If you want to, if you, if you want us to tackle the, um, ambulance receipts, I can do that. My question would be, do your ambulance receipts go into the general fund, or are they going into a special revenue fund? Are they, are they fund restricted somehow?
Uh, yeah, they, they go into an ambulance account, but that also, um, goes as, uh, costs that, that are on the revenue side.
Okay, all right, I mean, I...
So, it is both, I mean, not a hundred percent, but there's a portion that is accounted for on the revenue side.
All right, so if I can understand what that proportion is, then I'm more than happy to add ambulance revenue in as an off, as a partial offset, if you would like me to do that, that would be fine.
What about the existing taxes? Is that?
If you want me to do that, I will, but I just have to point out that net is total net, and people forget this. They assume that there's a dead site sitting there, and it must not be generating any cost at all, but it's paying some taxes. I, I mean, I can net out the taxes, but I'm then going to have to say to you, you know, your police do patrol there, and there is, there is public works activity going on there, this, it goes on all over town, so you have to assign some cost to it as well. That's all. I just want to be clear about that. Net means net.
It's a pretty secure site right now, but okay.
I understand, but I mean, you just, there is no such thing as a cost for your land use, even open space.
And, um, maybe the revenue ratio by key uses would be good?
Let me see what I can do.
Okay.
I should be able to do that, because, I'm just thinking back to the Legacy Farms model, yeah, I can do that. But you're going to want to pay more attention to the net revenue than the revenue ratio.
Okay.
But I'll give you both, I'll give you both.
And we're going to put what is not included, right?
Yeah, I will, just so it's clear.
Just a brief synopsis of what we didn't include intentionally?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. All right, well, this was fun, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I pass the test? Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
They will educate me, who is not too bright, so, thank you.
Oh, I didn't think that at all.
Big A there, all right.
Do you need me to come to the next meeting? That's a question I guess I should ask.
I'm hoping not, because I suspect we might need you to come to a meeting farther down the road with more definition.
That's, that's fine, I'm just asking.
I just don't want to waste your scope on a meeting that you'd...
Yeah, our next meeting, too, I don't know what level of discussion.
You have all those legacy places to be.
We also have, uh, another developer presenting, a property owner, Saris, in that same evening, so I don't know what, what level of discussion we're talking about, but...
Okay. I'm just asking for schedule reasons, that's all.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Story of my life.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to see everyone again.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, I'll be in touch.
All right, hang on while I try to find my agenda again.
Wolfham Street watershed.
Wolfham Street watershed updates, all right. So, I know that, um, Chris Okerfer was out of action for a little while, but just curious if we have any, um, updates on action items for the Wolfham Street issue? I mean, have we notified the Butters that they can see about connecting, or have we started the...
Yeah.
CTV, or...
I don't think any...
Have you written a hundred grants to the...
No, I don't think any of that. Well, a grant piece, um, Andrew's going to speak to some of the research and, and the latest potential grant opportunity that, um, that I received, but with regards to some of the, the work that's being done in-house with Public Works, I, I don't believe anything's been done. Chris has been out due to a, a, a pretty significant accident, um, he hasn't returned yet, so our weekly meetings where the, that, that discussion occurs, hasn't happened, but I don't believe they've done any of that, um, at this point.
Do we need him to go for the cost estimate on the, on the video? We probably need him for the interface with the residents or connections, but...
Yeah, no, we can get that.
Okay.
Yeah, um...
You know, when, when Chris spoke about connectivity, um, before his accident.
Oh, yeah, I'll just, I'll just have to get an update. One, he's been out, and I, I haven't had a chance to connect with anybody else in the department, a day removed from town meeting, but it's on the list.
Yeah, man, that was hours ago.
Seemed like yesterday.
Yeah. All right, uh, okay, so, well, Andrew's going to talk about, uh, big, huge grants, right?
Well, we have two, uh, things to share that related to the, the subject properties. The DEP grant that the folks from Mass DEP referred us to, um, may be a challenge for us. It's a, a one-point-four-million-dollar fund to be spread across the entire Commonwealth, and a million of that is for impaired waters specifically. That leaves about four-hundred thousand dollars for any project consistent with NPS management plans, and not to comply with, I don't know what this acronym means, but NPDES requirements, so...
Ask the man.
Discharge.
Sure.
Discharge to the river.
So, if we have a project that fits into that NPS management plan, we can ask for up to four-hundred thousand dollars, and hope no one else in the Commonwealth also asks for that money. Realistically, I believe the folks from Mass DEP suggested we might be looking to hire some sort of expertise in the twenty or thirty-thousand-dollar range to advise us further on what to do on that property. Couple of other things to keep in mind, uh, it's due January, or June 2nd, which is two weeks from today. Uh, there's a forty percent match, we can include in-kind work, so our staff that is assisting in the project would count, uh, but whatever we're asking for, we need to be willing to commit other resources to. Priorities are going to be Sudbury, Assabit, and Concord Rivers, and also shovel-ready projects. So, I mentioned the Three Rivers, meaning that we're in that watershed, so we're, we're a priority area, which is good. It means we're not going to be competing with folks that are in, in other similarly prioritized watersheds. The funding won't be distributed until February, that's a target, it's not an absolute date, and then we would have two years to spend it. So, now looking back at the project that we're hoping to apply for this grant for, there's no immediate resolution. Even if we get the grant, we're not going to spend the money for about eight or nine months. Then that report's going to come back and say, "Hey, all the folks in this part of town, here's what we think we're going to do to solve your problem." And then we're going to have to find the resources to do that, if the town's going to try to pay for it. So, we're looking at a, a couple of years' timeline here for any real impactful change in that neighborhood, if we're looking at just this grant. The best opportunity on the grant would be the non-point source pollution controls, and specifically, that means urban runoff management, which is this type of stuff, people wanting to pump water off their property into our storm drains. It's normally just what falls from the sky, but goes into the storm drains. That's what, they, they call that urban runoff. That's what we're going to try to manage. If we do apply for this, uh, we're probably going to attack it from that angle. Linda Hansen and I, this is our best, uh, judgment on where to proceed. We're going to need some people with an engineering background in hydrology to help us craft the correct terminology and so on, uh, to apply for a decent grant thing. So, all that being said, I look at this and say, "This is one of those sort of crapshoot kind of grant opportunities." However, MEMA has a grant opportunity that is much more in our wheelhouse, and of course, I've left it in my wheelhouse, I don't know where it is. The, um, just a moment. Pretty, should I drop this on the floor when I drop my, all my books? Give me just a moment.
Sure.
So, the MEMA grant is for, um, more specifically, stormwater management projects, things that, things that, when you read the grant definition, you're sort of going, gee, that sounds just like that presentation we got a couple of weeks ago. The grant application deadline is August and November, it's a, it's a two-part, uh, grant application. I have to read more of the details of it to understand what that breakoff is, but I believe that the big distinction there is, um, some people have projects ready to go, and they'll get in for the August deadline. Other people, the only wording I did read talks about, like, fine-tuning your application. My sense is, your project's not ready, you probably won't get all that information you need before August, so they're going to give you till November. In any case, they're going to fund those projects in the late fall, and then, um, we could proceed. So, that may be more realistic, there's more money on the table, it's more in our wheelhouse for what we're trying to accomplish, um, and it happens sooner.
I guess, I got to agree that, you know, the DEP one, seemed like it has a whole big payoff potential, and with our DPW Ops Manager still out and fourteen days to do it, doesn't seem worth the aggravation in energy, but seems like if we do some work ahead of the other one, run the cameras and things, maybe we'll know enough to put in a good application in August.
I think that's a key, like, right now, I'm not sure what I would apply for if I was running off to write this grant. While we got a lot of information from Mass DEP, we could probably use a little more information before saying, "Hey, grant opportunity, please give us money for this specific thing." So, we may have to put a little money on the table, for instance, to, to get to that point. I don't think it would be a lot, but it may give us a much higher, uh, chance of receiving a grant than if we just sort of threw something at the wall and see if it sticks kind of application.
Are we making sure that the residents in the area are being kept informed of the efforts that we're making on this, uh, so that they don't feel that we're not taking, uh, you know, appropriate action to move forward?
So, when they presented, it's been, what, about three weeks now? We told the folks in the room that that would be the case, but this is all we've done, is the research, so we haven't really moved forward with anything specific.
Have they, have they been updated that we've been researching, and they, they know something's going on?
Well, that's what we told them that night, that we were going to look into this grant.
Okay.
Which is due in a few weeks. So, at this point, if we're going to pursue this, we could certainly, uh, send out to that email list or that Butters list, we acknowledged that we had some of that information available to us. Between Linda Hansen and the folks down in Municipal Services, we can get a note out to them.
The other question I would have is, um, the couple, first off, do we know if many took advantage of the, basically, instruction, for lack of a better word, to reroute their pumps into the storm drains?
They haven't, they haven't been notified yet, because Chris is out, it's auto accident, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's some concerns there about what we're putting in the storm drains, we want to make sure we're helping the people, but not creating some other problem. But I believe that Chris was going to move forward... But I believe that Chris was going to move forward with that, but then timing hasn't occurred.
Okay.
He's been out for nearly a week now.
I'll then just forego my second point.
Okay.
Is there a preference that people be allowed to do that if it's legal and not creating other pollutant problems?
Oh, yeah, we agreed on that, yeah. And all the Butters were going to be notified, but it was a case by case that he'd have to work with them on it. And the owners would have to pay for it. But, you know, he'd have to check that they didn't have contaminant problems.
Yeah.
But the point that we agreed on last time was he was going to, I don't know, use that email list or notify the Butters, basically.
That was what he and Linda and Wayne and Miko, our engineer, sat down about. So I'm pretty sure they were strategizing the next steps. And so I can, Linda was out today as well. I'll verify what next steps they agreed to and see if we can move that forward tomorrow.
And from my standpoint, I mean, if Chris is the contact person who's out, you know, we don't really want to do the notification until he's back. And, you know, when his phone starts ringing, there's somebody to answer it.
We should be able to get it. I anticipate he may be back tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So I think, you know, that we can have that discussion if he is. I think he's going to try to come back tomorrow. So certainly, you know, hopefully by the end of the week. It shouldn't be that much longer that he is out. So just to follow up on Andrew's discussion, the grant that he's referring to from MEMA is a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's part of a sort of a collaborative grant between MEMA, who's really the project manager and funding source, but DCR as well. So MEMA and DCR put out this grant and they, DCR has a mitigation specialist as well as MEMA. And they kind of do a co-agency review of the grant applications. Grants are fairly labor-intensive. You've got to do some homework before you submit. So what I've seen in the past is most, there's a lot of folks that don't submit because they don't really know what, you know, what the mitigation that they're looking to attempt and they don't want to do the homework with regards to some of the formula and calculations and anticipations that are required of the grant application. And so as Andrew said, there's two deadlines, August and November. So this is very new, like within this last week. And they'll have, I think, eight planned, eight sessions, RSVPed sessions, various locations throughout the state throughout the first couple of weeks of June. So we will identify which location makes sense for us and, you know, the appropriate people will attend that, get some information. It's usually like a, you know, two-hour overview of what's required for the grant application, Q and A, et cetera. I've gone to them in the past. But really, what's attractive is part of this, that grant, is it does allow for costs or projects that are dealing with culverts and stormwater and those types of things. So just a little more follow-up since his paperwork's in the wheelhouse.
Back on my desk. Kevin just gave it to me at 6 o'clock. We got it last week, as he said, and it has a 25% match requirement. So it's a lot more money available. But a 25% match then is also going to be more significant than the 40% match on a much smaller number. So we'll need to be prepared to pony up if we get it.
I'm looking forward to the new sign down the hallway that says the wheelhouse.
Elmsman.
Any other comments from the board on this agenda item? All right. We'll move on to agenda item number 11, the Town Administrator Review Process. And this is an annual process that's set forth, you know, as a requirement in the Town Charter. And I think it's still in the new Town Charter. I didn't look.
Yeah, it is.
But I put in the Dropbox the Performance Evaluation Directions. And I'll just summarize them here. There's basically a form that needs to be filled out where you grade Kevin on all sorts of categories of things and provide as many comments as you can. And those all come back to the chair and then they're compiled and a average score is put forth and then the comments are put into a annual performance report by the chair. The things that you have to keep in mind is that we need to, you basically have 30 days to complete your forms, your evaluation forms. That starts now. And that includes what you should probably do going through this is, you know, sit down with Kevin at some point and go through it because some of these questions and categories are surprisingly difficult to grade without talking to Kevin. But, I mean, you'll get a chance to do it. But big picture is get it back, everything back to me within 30 days and then we can actually get the summary report out on time before the end of the fiscal year. I've also put into the Dropbox the performance review from last year showing the cumulative scoring and then the summary letter. Just a caution that last year's review was a little, a little non-standard because a lot of the...
Only two members.
A lot of the board members were no longer available at the time. And the chair who put it together was a new addition to the board. So I've also put in Dropbox a performance review from '07. And if I find any other stray ones, I'll put them in there to...
Do you need the one? I wrote one. Is that the one that I wrote?
No, this is Sally's. So, yeah, sure, if you have it, send it to me and I'll put it in Dropbox just so everybody can get an idea of what a standard one's supposed to look like.
Please note those older ones were not of this town administrator.
Correct.
That is correct, yeah, right, right.
Oh, you skipped one in between.
Did we?
I think you skipped some.
I was just going to change the name from '07.
This three-year gap.
Is there?
John.
No mic.
Well, yeah, because of the timing, there was, there was at least two years.
Yeah, I remember going through these and it was like, well, you just got here and we have to do a review of you? It's like, okay. I mean, that was kind of like last year, which was almost this year. But the big takeaway for the board members, 30 days and counting. So get these back. Next item on the agenda, the consultant contract renewal discussion. We had discussed last meeting that, you know, policy was for us to always consider contract renewal six months before expiration. And just my experience is best practice that to keep the consultants on their toes, it's always good to do them every three or four or five years. That's in search of the old policy. Any luck finding that?
No.
No. Any luck finding any policies?
Yeah, there's a bunch of other policies.
Oh, really? Okay. Is there a way to like search old emails and stuff? Or do we have like a book of meeting minutes and you just flip through them and say, oh, there it is?
Yeah, that's what Becky Moska did after the last meeting. Everything's filed electronically on the SLUTM drive. She did the searching for the policy documents.
It's strange because this policy's several years prior to when, you know, when you thought this one might have been adopted to now. And they're all there, but there's nothing in reference to that. There's a...
Well, I had a hint that it was in '05, '06.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't remember that far back. Regardless of the policy, though, it still strikes me as an okay idea, but I'd just be curious what the other members of the board are thinking regarding that issue. I mean, we have what? I forget, I don't have to list up, but we have like 10 contract or something? And some are pretty new, so there's not much on that.
Yeah, I mean, some of them, depending on what they are, some of them might even worth discussing because 30B requires us to do it every three years anyway. So we're really only talking about the ones that are exempt from 30B. You know, I mean, as the chief procurement officer required to do those every three years or whatever, I shouldn't say three years, whatever, three years unless authorized for more than that. So by default, every three years, contracts are rebid or whatever, as long as they're not exempt.
So do we have any of the 30Bs coming up?
We do, yeah. IT, one.
We just did the golf course.
Golf course.
The, that's another one I'm doing.
I don't know what's the other.
It's in my wheelhouse.
Yeah. So you said the IT one's coming up?
So last year, we asked Town Meeting to extend the length of time that we can write an IT contract for. And that was approved at Town Meeting. We haven't put that contract out on the street yet. And the delay is really just a workload issue with the vacancies we had in my department in the past year. It was backburning. There's drafts of it sitting there ready to go out. It should go out probably, I would say, in early July.
And this is just a general advertise? I mean, we advertise, how do we advertise those? Like the IT contract? Does that go on there?
Well, the IT one is a couple of things. One is there's service provisions at the state Massachusetts Operational Services Division, which does a lot of bidding for the Commonwealth. So you can find lists of vendors on there. And in fact, some of them might be qualified to do it and we could hire them without going out to bid. That's what they're there for.
Because they're pre-approved by the state.
Yes.
Right. But a lot of times, you want to go out to bid anyway. And, but it's a nice place to find a list of vendors to then send your RFPs to. We also have people who knock on our doors every month and say, hey, I'm in this business. You interested in buying stuff from us? Sometimes we are, sometimes we just take their card and when it's time to send out an RFP, we send them out. So I've got three or four companies like that that have approached me in the past year that are interested in our IT contract. And then, of course, there's the incumbent who we're relatively happy with. We'll certainly be asking him to bid again. And then you're required, the value of the contract, you're required to advertise in a paper of local circulation. So that'll happen.
Got you.
Some of the ones that are exempt, just because they're exempt, they're renewed annually as well. They're looked at, discussed, and, you know, given another year. They don't meet the 30B requirements and such as engineering contract, you know, on-call engineer. That's sort of, you know, notification that we're going to renew again for another year.
Trash.
So trash is exempt from 30B requirements, solid waste and recycling, but they're in a five-year contract. Town Meeting authorized a five-year agreement with them. And I think they're, where are we at now? Finishing year four?
Does that count as a vendor contract or a consulting contract?
It's a vendor.
Okay.
Yeah, vendor contract. But they are exempt from 30Bs. Rhyme or reason. Because it's a significant value.
Yeah.
It is exempt. Good lobbying and solid waste. But again, so some of the ones, like engineering contracts, you know, we have an existing contract that may have been, you know, from X year, but annually, you know, we look at them and then we've given them an authorization for another year type of thing to continue. And those are exempt from 30B. The legal contract for council services is just, you know, another one of those open and there's no date on it specific and is exempt from 30B.
Are any of those larger exempt ones, you know, like rolling into year five or six or it's been a while?
Probably the longest one is, is legal services, which I think is...
About what it incurred?
10. What it incurred, most of the, most of the work that's done with them is project-driven, you know, project-specific. They kind of have a contract agreement for like an hourly rate, but it's not, you know, it's, it's sort of loose in the sense of we're not always doing related services with them. A little bit different than our scheduled engineering, on-call engineer. But, I mean, if you look at them from duration, that haven't, you know, we haven't done anything with that are exempt would probably be them. I mean, they would be in there. And legal was probably 2010, 11? I think 11 maybe. And...
That's getting there.
EHP?
Engineering was three, Mike was here, so it was probably, I don't know, 12. It's probably been a few years with them, too. We've done one year, two renewals. So I think it's been three going on, four. And legals, been at least four, probably four. I have an 11. I can get the date on it.
You had me going on legal for a second. You said 10. I'm like, it's been 10 years?
No, 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 no.
You're giving me 20, 10.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got you.
But, I mean, again, aside from any policy, I mean, there's those that, you know, we review and we renew. There's those that we don't have to renew, but we still review. And in some cases, it's just, you know, a case of, you know, don't change what's working and, you know, things are going okay.
Okay.
Because with some of them, there's definitely a learning curve. You know, even, even engineering, whatever, just getting to know the individual communities is, to some degree, the value with maintaining some.
Yeah, I got to agree with that. I just found that the renewal process keeps you focused on the client.
Yeah.
Refocused on the client, but, okay.
Perhaps we should do a report card or evaluation on some of these. And then, you know, some of it's a fiscal thing. You want to make sure you're not overpaying for services, but as Kevin just said, some of it is, you know, once you develop a relationship with an engineer or a legal counsel or whatever, you, you know, switching can be more painful than working out some difference of opinion or whatever in how work gets done. But that report card might guide us towards improving those relationships without having to go through the pain of change.
Yeah, I mean, just from perception, I mean, you think you'd have a lot of contracts. I don't think, I don't think there's an exhaustive list of either vendors or consultants that, that aren't reviewed and, you know, renewed accordingly. Particularly, obviously, the ones that we're bound by with 30B. But other ones that are vendor-driven are, you know, proprietary software-type things that are renewed every three years, but we're not going to go out and change our assessing database. So there's those contracts, too, that is just a totally different animal. But we do renew them every, you know, every few years.
All right. Please don't change any more databases. Every time we get suckered into that, it never works out well.
Yes.
It's like every time we get a new town administrator, he's got new software.
Yeah, I know.
Kills us. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board on the topic? Cool. All right, 13. Let's go straight to economic development updates.
Okay. Don't have a whole lot on economic development or TA report, too much since our last meeting.
We got a presentation next time.
We do, yeah. We have, so at our next meeting, I'll work with the chair on solidifying that. They've been reaching out, trying to identify what time they'll be on the agenda and, you know, get some guidance. So I'll follow up with them on that. I know...
Andy, how much time they want?
I anticipate about a half an hour presentation and I'd say 45 minutes with the presentation and Q and A.
And are they still on for a public, more public presentation the following week?
Yes, on the TA report. We'll...
Oh, sorry, okay.
I'll use it so we can skip over that one in the...
Yeah, we can skip that. They're presenting to the public on June 11th at 6, that's a Thursday evening, June 11th at 6:30 PM in the library. That presentation is sponsored by the Economic Development Committee. EDC discusses at their meeting and like the sort of, they're coordinating that event and sponsoring that event. and sponsoring that event, so it'll be Thursday, June 11th at 6:30. Saracen Properties wants to do some advertising to it. The town will do some advertising through our mechanisms, and there'll be a follow-up and similar presentation to, to what's presented to the board, but be more available for a larger audience, a larger public viewing.
Do you know if the intent of that is to actually have them do a presentation, or just have a show?
No.
Like, you know, like walking into a trade show where they have posters up?
They will do a presentation.
It's a presentation?
A presentation. I would anticipate, they may modify after the presentation to the board, you know, depending on what some of the feedback, you know, you folks have, they may incorporate, they might tweak it, but it'll be a very similar presentation. It's just another venue to reach the public. It's really another night, it's an evening where Tuesday evening is...
The reason I ask is, we have to instruct people, if people ask us what's going on, we want them to be there at a certain time in order to see the full presentation, not, they'll be there at seven o'clock, and they're there till 8:30, whatever.
Absolutely, yeah. No, it's a scheduled presentation, and then they'll be around after the presentation for discussion and questions. But on Thursday is the least impact when it comes to committees and events. As I discussed prior, we were talking about trying to do a Saturday event, it gets more and more complicated. We're trying to keep it close to the June 2nd, so that there's, you know, not a huge gap, but also recognize the issues that June faces with graduation that immediate Saturday, and some other things. It was just, determine as best, let's just do it on a Thursday evening.
Good.
And we'll get that out, too. The signed bylaw, being looked at with Linda Conley, a member of the planning board, and Rick Asman, the zoning enforcement officer, looking at our signed bylaws and potential rewrite recommendation, and idea to recognize needs for me and different business districts, i.e. the downtown versus powder mill, and some of those things. I don't have any specific details on it, other than...
Wait, this isn't kind of, this wasn't a prior discussion among us, right? This is just something...
No, this is kind of an economic development committee and enforcement discussion. You know, we're looking at our by, we're not be looking forward at our bylaws anyway, now the charter is adopted, and the next step, and it's just kind of a culmination of a few things that triggered it.
Well, just to motivate you, it only took me three years to get the signs changed, so they can do it perpendicular to the buildings instead of flush against.
Well, that's good. Good motivation.
Yeah.
And, uh, let's hit on economic development at this point.
Well, town administration report.
The, uh, Bill Memson, the town planner, Andrew, myself, are planning to attend, invited by Representative Hogan, who has organized a State House event with Saracen Properties. They've invited management from Saracen Properties to the State House this Friday to explore grant opportunities. So we'll be headed to the State House, representing the town and Saracen as well. And Representative Hogan is coordinated with about six agencies to attend this meeting and present, you know, everything from Office of Economic Development, Community Development, there's some folks from Regulatory and Planning, and all the players will have representatives and just have a discussion about how those, Mass Development, how those entities could help this project, help Saracen, and have a bigger conversation around potential grant opportunities, too. The Open Table, continue, there's a correspondence in your, your packet this evening from Open Table. We continue to work with them to find a resolution. We've met, we had about a two-and-a-half hour meeting with, with town officials and their director, as well as a board, a couple of board members, and it was a good meeting. Again, the town, you know, just want to reiterate that we're doing our part to help, you know, the circumstances that, that have played out. Saracen's allowing them to use the pantry at this point, at least through June 30. I think we're still negotiating with them to, for continued pantry space, at least. They provided the last dinner catered, dinner for Open Table, and they'll be providing the next one, that this Monday is, there is no dinner planned due to the holiday, but they'll be providing the next dinner in May as well for Open Table. We provided them with a list of, we've had discussion, provided them a list of contacts, potential locations in town that may be a solution, and again, we're doing what we can on that end. Anything you want to add to the Open Table discussions?
No, you covered it, yeah. Are the schools in the list of potential options, at least for the...
Yeah. No, they were, yeah. They were provided Dr. Girardi's information, and were listed as a potential piece of that, yeah. Negotiations with the fire union are underway, as I've mentioned before, and we'll begin the Public Safety Dispatches on June 1st.
Kevin, who were their negotiators? Who were their union reps? And who, is it you and Andrew that work for us, or...
Yes.
Or there are others that are involved?
On the fire union?
Yeah.
The fire...
Discussions.
Yeah, fire negotiations on the town side is myself, Andrew, and the fire chief, only for technical advisement, similar to the police chief.
Does he sit on the meetings?
Uh, yes, he's in every meeting. Again, not, the role is there is really, we want to agree to something that's not going to work for the department, so they're really there for a technical advisement piece, the chief, and they, you know, he weighs in when, when needed, but the negotiation piece of it is through myself.
Yeah, okay.
On, you know, on the town side, they, they've elected a new union president, Dan Gould.
Gould, Gould's last name?
Yeah, firefighter. And Sean Kylie, Captain Kylie, and John King represent the union on their side. I'll have.
Okay. Uh, for chairman's report, I don't have too much, I have mostly questions for Kevin, but let me do say that, thank you all for your work last night at Town Meeting. Town Meeting's effectively our boss, and they seem to like us a little bit, and they got the information they needed to make the decisions they had to make, and everything passed, so good going. Question-wise, a few random questions here. Now that our town charter is all set, you know, we're supposed to have a bylaw committee to make changes in case the charter changed stuff, but that kind of maybe could have happened a year ago. Have we made a call on that? Do we need it?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, we do. We've been talking about that.
Because of the charter, or just in general?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, both. The charter triggers it, but we do, we need it anyway.
I mean, I think the charter triggered it back at Town Meeting time a year ago, but...
We could have already started it.
Could have, all right.
The moderator appoints three residents to create the committee.
Have you told them that?
I actually just read that.
At least not really moderator yet, anyways, so...
In the wheelhouse?
Just a few minutes...
That's fine. Nothing, I was just curious if that had been already figured out.
Yeah, we're aware of it. We've already started the conversation, but nothing's happened yet.
I got you. And last night, I heard Becky in Town Council talking about new open meeting law training.
Yes. We have decided on that. It is going to be June 23rd.
Is that for all of us?
Yeah, there's some updates on there with regards to open meeting law, and we're going to invite all, all committees and et cetera. It was a, an off day, right? I think...
It's not a selectmen meeting night, and we, the intention was to invite in boards, committees, commissions, to give them the update, and then sort of their annual, you know, don't forget to get your new members sworn in, you know, all that kind of housekeeping stuff. It'd be a good time to do that.
Also, the, the ethics piece, they'll be updating on conflict of interest and all that stuff, still that two-year requirement, renewals on those, and all that stuff.
Oh, it's that time again.
Will happen, yeah.
Ah, okay. I got you. And all the newbies, or all the elects, or whatever, newly appointed that are starting July 1st, they're going to get invited anyways, right?
Yes, yeah. This was literally just finalized at like, you know, 11:00 PM last night. There was a couple of dates proposed, so yeah, we'll work to get that. I think, you'll probably see that information come out of the, you know, town clerk's office, or a combination of the town clerk's office and, and our office.
Got you. Two other questions. One is the, involving the fire station study. I guess we're in charge of coordinating that, right? Because at least don't tell me we're going to start a committee, you know, just for that study.
Right, no, what we'll do, we'll work on preparing a, an RFP with the scope and going moving forward with it.
Okay. And then the last comment I have is, for the development agreement for 129 Acton, I'm pretty sure we signed the wrong version, because we didn't have the, the schedule for the sign improvements that we had talked about last meeting, but that's okay. It's just a caution that we got to be a little more careful on that.
Okay.
And did we determine if it had been recorded with the land office, or wherever it gets reported? That's all set?
Yeah.
We got a receipt of all that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, let's, what I have, let's go for board member reports, and let's, Tim.
Nothing new to report.
Nothing new, all right. Chris? He's good.
He's good. I don't know that I'm good.
Uh-oh.
So we're talking about training and having new electees and new appointees. I guess the question I have is, isn't, shouldn't there be a expectation of those who are on town committees and town, whether elected or appointed, that those folks should attend the town meeting, since it's kind of the most important day in the town's annual calendar?
I think that's fair.
Sounds like a bylaw that could change.
I mean, it's just, to me, to sit there and notice those absent is, it's kind of disconcerting that we appoint, people come in here and ask us to appoint them to a position, or they ask the town moderator or somebody to appoint them to a position, which they, I assume if they ask, they, they want to be there, but they don't make the effort to be at the most important day in the town's annual calendar, which is the town meeting. I think it's just something that, you know, as we go through the year, and we start to get towards next year's town meeting, that it should be a priority to, you know, insist or that everybody be there.
You know what, Chris? That would be, and I don't disagree with your sentiment, but we appoint a lot of these people to as volunteers, and a lot of them have business commitments and family commitments or whatever, and those are understandable. But maybe that should be a standard question that we ask, or a statement that we make to any appointee that we have to any of our committees, that it is expected that they will attend.
I, I agree with asking the question. I just think that it's, it's kind of, in my mind, as, as we sit here, and we've gone through this with several people, it's almost like it's implied that that's going to be part of the responsibility that you're accepting by requesting to be a part of any type of committee in town. It just strikes me as, as sad in a way, that a group of people who, you know, sit here, and they come, come in here and they conduct the town's business, don't have the, have the energy or the, you know, to, to come to those meetings. It's, I understand that people have family commitments, there's medical commitments and illness that crop up to keep you from going and very certain things, but, you know, we pretty much set the date in January for the town meeting.
Well, actually, it's permanently set, but...
I mean, the specific...
But the specific date never changed.
You know, the date on the calendar, the number, it's there. So why not, why not insist that those people come? It's just, it's, it's just a comment from my standpoint, that I just, you look around, you see people who want to, you know, grind you on certain issues through the year, on budget issues and other issues, and then they're absent when the time comes to vote on it. It doesn't make sense. That's all.
I, I have to say that I, I agree with you, but I have to point out that it, it did me good last night to have five selectmen sitting up there, because some of those meetings, it could have been, it was a little lonely sometimes, so good to see that the full house showed up.
It was nice to be, no one even got hurt.
That's right.
Almost. Trust me, me tripping over a microphone made my daughter's day. I think she posted it in several spots.
It was just decoration, too. They didn't, they didn't work, so...
Oh, yes, I did notice.
Yeah, she made it.
All right, David?
Yeah, I want to reiterate the comments that Phil made about Town Meeting. I thought it was wonderful. I thought that we learned a lesson about special Town Meeting and being able to post it at the same time, so that we don't have the half-hour delay. As Bill mentioned earlier, it might have energized the crowd, because it seemed like the questions started during the special, but, so congratulations to everyone who had a hand in preparing for. I know that the administration takes a lot of time in prepping. Thank you for that, and the board, thank you, everyone, for our efforts. Just a reminder, because it hasn't been mentioned, Monday is actually probably my favorite day of the year, is Memorial Day relative to the parade. I think that's one of the best parades that we have here in Maynard, so I would encourage everybody to attend. And Kevin, did the town hall have a meeting today? Weren't you going to shut down for half a day or something, or 2:00?
Oh, we did that last week.
Last week? How'd the meeting go?
Excellent, yeah, no, I left that off. It was, it was excellent. We met, we had tremendous feedback from everyone that participated. We had all town hall staff, the foreman supervisors from DPW, folks from police and fire. The presenter was just top-notch, very dynamic, engaging, everybody, I mean, we, there was no negative comment, other than, you know, we need to have her back and more of these type of things. It was excellent, it was, it was really customer service-driven interaction on, you know, follow-through with a variety of things, as well as interacting with coworkers, et cetera.
Yeah.
It was very well-received.
Good, and I hope that, you know, as I've mentioned many times, creating a culture of customer service is something that just doesn't happen with one meeting, two meetings, or three meetings. It becomes, it has to be mentioned at every staff meeting, and every supervisor or manager has to mention it in basically every meeting that they have. Remember, we are here to serve, and we are here to serve the customers, et cetera. However it is, I'm doing it from the perspective of my company. Took about 15 years for my company to evolve into, it is now part of the DNA of the company, is not only customer service, but there are other aspects of engagement and whatever, but it all builds upon one another, and it changes the dynamic of the employee. And so it's very, very important, not only just carry on one meeting, but make it part of the plan and continue it, and, and whatever.
She'd be a good consultant to engage with.
What's that?
She would be a good consultant to engage with, if you're, if you're in need of a, you run out of presenters, she highly recommends...
We, like I say, at my company, that's what we focus on, and it has changed the environment, changed the culture, and it has worked to everyone's benefit. That's all.
All right.
To lower rates.
That has no control over, and after this winter, I think everybody's homeowners' rates are going to be going up.
Yeah. Not bad. Jason?
I have nothing.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just one item I had in here that left my list, but made it my packet, but not yours. I just want the board to be aware of, I can send this out, a letter that the town received. This was received after the packet was done, but in case you're hearing conversation, from the Conservation Commission, addressed to myself.
from the Conservation Commission addressed to myself and the Board of Selectmen regarding violations at town hall with regards to activity within 100 feet of the river located behind town hall and some work that the DPW has been working on at our request to improve the area behind town hall, make it a visible location and an access area for the river and kind of a place where we could, we could clean up. It's, we've received tremendous public comments, actually even last night. David Marks reached out to me and, you know, he's watching it and he's very excited to write a story on it, piece of thing. It's, it's gone probably beyond what we were initially thinking with some tree trimming, you know, with no ill will, but we did receive a violation notice with regards to some sediment control and some disturbance in there. The DPW has responded to the Conservation Commission. They are going to file a notice of intent and a plan for what they're doing. And a lot of the immediate remedies is some silt barriers and things like that. But I think you'll visibly notice some improvements as far as what's been done back there. But I did want you to be aware, just in the interim before our next meeting, if you hear from any, anybody, whether it be from conservation members or not. We, we've received it, we're taking it seriously and it's going to, it has already been addressed via email and we're working on a packet that'll be submitted to Conservation Commission. The Conservation Agent, you know, was aware of the work that we're doing. To what extent, that's still debatable. But, you know, again, there was no ill will and we're doing what we need to, to make it work.
I'm a little conflicted. On one hand, I just want to cut their budget. On the other hand, it's, I'm a big believer in if we make others do it, we should do it.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Right, so, and believe me, there was no, anyway.
I mean, it's just like other homeowners and stuff. It was totally innocent and it's like, whoops.
And the town letter does not separate us from any other individual.
Yeah, that's great.
Speaking of that, one, one other comment, if I may, Bill. We are under the Level 1 water ban or whatever. Was there ever a vote taken by the board or is it required for the Level 1?
Required for the Level 1 water.
So we did know vote is required on that.
The vote was many years ago because it's permanent and it's always the same time every year.
And then the second thing is, I got reports today, I don't know if it's true or not, but I don't know if Level 1 water bans affect the high school fields or whatever, but apparently the water was running all day long.
Yeah.
I don't know.
No, that's, that's accurate. I don't know about all day, but it's been used and it's been, it's been done by, one, it's allowable use because it's a new, it's new vegetation we have till June 1st to do it.
Right.
The other thing, we've received a, because we knew this was gonna be an issue, our interpretation, we received an extensive review and permission from DEP that it's absolutely allowable.
That's fine, that's good.
And for that reason. They reviewed our permit and requirements and.
That's fine.
Allowable for the month of May because it's establishing a new.
Yes.
Growth, right.
Month of May and I think the month of September.
Yeah, right.
Before new.
So we won't be watering during the day in July, right?
Absolutely not.
I got you, okay.
And again, it's just, it's not, we couldn't water just to, for the sake of keeping it aesthetically green and pleasing. It's only, solely able to water because it's, it's for the new growth of vegetation. This is the last punchless item that CTA has had that we've been, you know, dealing with for the last year. It wasn't left properly and we've had to get to where we're at now. So they're, they're back now with subcontractors and hopefully we'll get some suitable landscaping there. Yeah, exactly. It's actually, yeah, where the old high, high school, excuse me, was.
Oh, is that where it was? I was just told the high school field and I was thinking it was the football field.
No, 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 it wasn't.
I just said, I said, I doubt it was running all day long and I was told, yes, it was running all day long.
They did that, the high school last year where they established, tried to establish grass during the non-allowed area timeframe.
All right, motion to adjourn?
I'm a.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Let's go.